Order that the record show that a forum of board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Governance Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if you will, join me in the same pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item up on the agenda will be our roll call of all our members that are present. Ms. W. B. Gomez.
Here.
Ms. Maria Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
Ms. Estefan Sertou.
Here.
Daryl Owens is here and absent with us tonight is Ms. Maria Cruz-Brans and Mr. Sean Glo. And next we'll move to Section 3, which will be public comments on the agenda items. And we'll let Mr. Sertou take a look then see if we have anybody signed up for either. Just for the non-agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Sertou. Okay, so there are no signees for items on the agenda. That's Section 3, but Section 4 for the public comments on non-agenda items, we do have one person listed? Oh, maybe it's two. Okay, and is it Alloin? Madison?
Alan.
Okay, and then also, and she's going to be with Jenny Fan. All right, ladies, if you will, come up. Sit in line. Have a video?
No, we shot this.
Are you gonna read off of that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Hello, you guys. We are students from Canada High School. Um, we would like to present the idea to you guys of a graduation speech um at um our graduation this year in May. Um, and this is kind of like an approval.
Um, I want to start by saying that like.
Can you also, can you do the mic directly, please?
Sorry. Um, I want to start off saying that Jenny and I have put in a lot of work to be here um in this, in this area right now and to be in the position to graduate in the spring. Um, Jenny and I have been serving as the class president and the class vice president for the past four years. Um, we put together a slide, but we don't have, we don't have the proper equipment, so bear with us here.
Um, this is also not to discredit uh valedictorian or salutatorian because they are very important people as well. And we take that into recognition. Um, they have earned their way up there and we do not want to like uh take away from their light or anything. This is just um an addition um and a privilege to um speak at graduation as well, so we wanted to present the idea to you guys. So um the first topic is our motive and reasoning for why we want to do this. Um, like Alloin said, Alloin and I have been um in officer positions throughout high school. Um, her being class body president and then me being student council president as well. Um, throughout this graduation speech, we will contribute uh as a voice for not only the class of 24, but for our campus as a whole, speaking on behalf of them. Um, we have both, um, the both of us have uh received abundant amounts of input from our classmates uh at KHS and apply them to things such as fundraising activities and events that go on within our campus. Um, these can be an opportu-, this can be an opportunity where we will do the same towards our speech that leaves an impact on our class of 24. Um, many schools across the United States, I know our neighboring districts such as um Legacy High School, Martin High School, Arlington High, Sam Houston, big 6A schools like that as well, get the opportunity to have leadership speak on behalf of their class. Executing this can set an example and implement this for classes below us in the future graduations and not only us, so we kind of want to leave our mark on Canada as well um and have that implemented throughout our system. Our second slide is going to be benefits to this. As a class, we were able to reflect on memories throughout our four years at Canada High School. Us as classmates will get to say and have our final goodbyes as well with this speech.
To add on top of that, we'll be able to demonstrate our appreciation for our class and all the hard work that they put in. Um, and just making this entire high school experience memorable. I know our freshman year, we had a little hiccup, but honestly, we kept the ball rolling and now we're here at this moment. Uh, we also want to celebrate the graduation, the graduating classes' accomplishment and offer a word of, words of encouragement to uh empower them as they go on and follow in the next chapter of their lives. So now you're probably thinking, what is our structure? How long, how long will you take? Uh, we're thinking of five minutes maximum, uh two, two and a half minutes for both of us. We'll start off with a hook and like congratulations to our graduation, our graduating class. Then we'll start with a brief hook regarding our journey throughout high school and our body would be used to inspire our graduates to do great things outside of high school and we'll close with an inspirational quote or a call to action. We will write the speech and get your approval directly, so if you have anything you want to add on to it, we will add to it.
Um, going off of what Alloin said, um, we did have a couple um difficulties at the beginning of our high school year. And I feel like this is a good way to speak on how not only we felt, but like as a class um and how Canada as a campus made it such a positive impact and how not only did it help us through COVID, but you guys allowed us to still learn in an environment where it was safe and we all felt welcomed um and how we like persevered from that conflict at the beginning and how it made us who we are today as young adults essentially when we graduate. Um, and then, thank you guys so much for listening. We really appreciate you guys' time. Um, and Alloin, any last words?
Yeah, like Jenny said, we appreciate your time and your uh ability to let us speak here and speak our truth, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Okay, thank you. We'd like to thank both of our speakers, Ms. Madison and Ms. Fan, for those uh words of request. We'll now go through Section 5, which is the special district recognitions, and for that, we'll turn it over to Mr. G.
All right, so we have Paul Ward's since the last board meeting, so let me, my glasses are here so I can read through these. Starting off with Canada High School, we have Marcus Parks with two, Tammy Berger, Dr. Chelsea Allison, Stephanie Morgan, Todd Reimer, Melissa Springfield, Kelly Wilson, Martha Moreno, Kristy Vick, Andrew Cupchik, Cupka, sorry, Tracy Hadoway, Stephanie Morgan, John Bowles, and Sarah Humphrey. On our facilities and maintenance, we had Jeff Leah, Maria Garcia, Lupe Garcia, Sarah Martinez, Beatrice Ortiz, Jesus Rodriguez, and Julio Ortega. At Central Office, or Administration of Office, Erin Martin and Brooks Tate. At Arthur Early Childhood Center, Laura Wells, Nanette Tate, Kennedy Cyfo, Vanessa Hanlon. At Delaney Elementary, Melissa Cook, Michelle Reed, Kelsey Dawson, Joanne Varner had two, Marcy Harris had two, Catherine Nevins had two, and Joe Rowe had two. Canada Junior High School, Casey Thompson, Stevie Moore, Charity Simmons, Officer Channing Bullard, Caitlin Grant, Roger Relaford, Phil Ervey, Myra Tovar, Toby Stone, Deja Jensen, Lindsay Hammonds, Sean Burt, Mrs. Schrum, Mrs. McCoy, or Miss McCoy, sorry. Uh, Thad Cone had two, Mimi Bumpus had two, Jessica Gilbert had four, Johnny Walker had two, Taylor Ferris had 11.
Hmm.
That's impressive. Jennifer Hamilton has two, Megan Lockwood had seven, again impressive. Daniel Wager had five, that's impressive. Aroseli Chavez, four, John Johnson, three, Emma Powell, four, Heather Beach, two, Alfredo Portillo, two, Cara Lycos, three, and Christopher Hendry, three. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. And that is it for Paul Ward.
And two demerits for this superintendent. Oh, my goodness. All right. And Section 5B, very, another impressive feat.
All right, so at this time, I would like to uh introduce to you. Uh, at the last board meeting, I expressed that Mr. Adams is retiring. He uh notified us and allowed us to start looking for his replacement. And we interviewed, and at this time, I would like to introduce to you Jaclyn West, our new, not just CFO, but she's going to be our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. So congratulations. Welcome aboard. Looking forward to you joining us, I believe, on October 17th, or 16th, sorry, 16th. Keep messing up that date, so October 16th, which uh we're excited to welcome her aboard. So congratulations and thanks for being here.
Welcome.
Yes. And we're in the green already.
She brought her family with her also, which they will, her two children will also be attending Delaney Elementary School.
I'm in.
So we uh welcome them in second grade, I believe, so.
Yay.
Awesome.
And her husband with us now. He teaches in another district, so we're not gonna.
Welcome, guys.
Welcome, definitely welcome.
All right.
All right, so uh we'll move forward to section.
Mr. Kegel said, what's he teach? Mr. Kegel's always on the lookout.
Scoutin' for talent. So we'll move to Section 6, which is the consent agenda. And all items under the, but the subheading will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda by trustee for discussion. And I have not been notified by anybody that they want anything removed.
Not heard anything, so.
All right, so that's the case, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Maria Douglas.
Second.
Second by Ms. B. Gomez. All in favor of the consent agenda, let it be known by I.
I.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Right, so we will now move over to Section 7, which is Start Site Information Only Section and 7A's Review of District and Campus Improvement Plans. Mr. G.
And Dr. Vu will uh lead us through this.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
As I promised last month, whenever we went over all of our assessment data for the 22, 23 school year, we brought to you today, thank you, we brought to you today our campus and district improvement plans. So um this is the Texas Education Code that requires that our improvement plans for each campus are developed, reviewed, and revised annually, um with the goal being to improve student learning outcomes. So whenever the principals and all of our leadership team are looking at the plans and working to develop a strong plan, we have to think about two things. What makes a school good and how do we measure it? So tonight, as you're hearing from the principals, those are the two guiding questions that they use to develop these plans. Here's our policy. So what you'll be looking for tonight, you're going to hear from the campus improvement plans. The principals were giving a, given a very specific list of what to include, the types of goals, the types of measurements to include. Um, and so what you're looking for is that they're mutually supportive of the district improvement plan. This is a snapshot of the board policy for your reference. And without further ado, I will introduce Ms. Wells. We're going to go Ms. Well, we're going, youngest to oldest, so we'll start with Ms. Wells at Early Childhood Center. And each of you have handouts, so you've been provided with the full campus improvement plan. It's in your board book. Um, you also have the performance objectives only. You have two pretty bulky documents, and then each of the principals has prepared a handout. Some of them are longer than a page, some of them are one page. It's not that one.
It's in the board book.
It's in the board book. It's in the board book. Oh, Tracy's not here tonight. Yeah, it's in the board book.
Oh, okay, I thought you liked.
Yes, I, I thought they were handouts in my hands this morning, but they're in your board book. So just to give you an idea of the handouts, um, you have the plans. There are a lot of the goals and strategies included in the plans are compliance-driven because they're tied to federal funding um based on the camp comprehensive needs assessment. So whenever you look at the handout, it's not a replica of the campus improvement plan, which you have as well. It's, I asked the principals to think about the big priorities that they have this year and put them in plain language for you all to understand. And so that's what they're going to be talking to you about tonight.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. And we went smallest to biggest because we're not going to say youngest to the oldest. We're not going to talk about age. Okay, so I'm going to talk about our priorities for the GO1. One of our priorities, our PLCs, we're going to focus on lesson internalization, which will ensure that our teachers support our students in meeting the rigor on our HQIM materials that we're using. The next priority will be conscious discipline. It's our SOL, SEL program, which will equip our teachers with a toolbox for their classrooms and teach our students how to self-regulate their emotions. The next one that we're going to focus on is power walks and scope and sequence walks. These will ensure that fidelity of our HQIM materials and ensure pacing of our curriculum. These three goals are going to ensure success for our students in tier one instruction. Priorities for our GO2 are all about ensuring open and constant communication for our stakeholders. And we're also helping in the creation of a PTO plant or a PTO so that we can plan and provide events on our campus. Our priorities for GO3 is our commitment to SEL for our students. We have a 30-minute block that's built into our master schedule. Campus security remains a high priority for us as well. And we're committed to our teachers and their success, so we're conducting monthly faculty meetings and new teacher monthly faculty meetings. And those are my goals and my priorities. Do you have any questions? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
I can't see you with my glasses on, but I can see you with my glasses off, so I'm going to go back and forth. Um, so at Delaney, we have a couple of priorities that we're going to be focusing on for GO1 to ensure that our tier one instruction is strong as it can be along with our PLCs that we do every Tuesday and our power walks that we'll be doing um on a weekly basis. We're also going to be making sure that we have um high HQIM using our Amplify and our STEM Scopes. We're going to be using our pacing guides to ensure that all teachers on each grade level are on the same track and on the same page and doing the same things within their um, their daily instruction. Um, so it doesn't matter which student, the, which teacher the student has, they're all getting this, the equal instruction. And then we're really going to be focusing on our attendance rate, trying to get that attendance rate back up to what it was pre-COVID is what we talk about. But trying to get that back up to where it needs to be. Then on the focus on GO2 is the communication, trying to make sure that our families and our teachers are, know everything that's going on. I send out every Sunday at 5 o'clock a smore that gives you all the information for the next two weeks that is, that, of the events that are happening on campus and the things that are going on. We're also going to be opening up, um back up some after-school activities coming soon. I'm trying to get the teachers in the swing of new Amplify instruction and getting their, their feet solid into the school year. And then we are going to be opening up back up maybe chess club, choir, art club, and things like that that the students are, will have the um option to stay after school to participate in. Also, our family and engagement nights, not only the ones that are required by Title I, but including some extra ones in there so that um what I say is open the doors and let them come in as much as we can and as often. For GO3, we have really adopted the champs' expectations. The teachers um received training last school year and implemented champs in, within the classroom. And this year, we have implemented champs within our common areas, so we have champ posters for um the hallways, the restrooms, recess, cafeteria, so that no matter what grade the students are in, they are all expected to follow the same expectations. So they start hearing it in first grade, and then by fifth grade, you're hoping that they're following those champs' expectations. So they're hearing the same language in their classroom as they do from the teachers and staff within the hallways. We do have a built-in SEL time in the morning time where we're able to, what we call circle up with our students, kind of have um, I, I get the day started. So we do have that built in just to help the students transition from home to school each morning. And then lastly is our campus safety. We're still doing our daily safety checks. We're still using Raptor and making sure that our, our parents are signing in, that are on campus volunteering or um for other activities, that they're signing in and that we're being safe. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In my handout, I missed the memo where it said one pager and mine's nine pages long. Um, but if you turn to page nine, this is kind of my um working document that has a timeline of um the things that we're doing. And um you can kind of see the progress that we've made on the things that are in the campus plan. Um, first and foremost, we're going to continue to follow all directives by CSS and utilize the online resources provided. We have restructured how our interventionist and campus administrators participate in PLC meetings. And we also added some time for our sped department and GT teacher to also meet in those PLCs. In previous years, we had um an interventionist work with one grade level or two. And so we kind of, and administrator work with a grade level or two. But this year, we divided it up where all administrators, reading interventionists, math interventionists, special ed department, and our GT teacher meet in those PLCs at least once a month. So the first week of the month, the math interventionists go in. Second week, reading. Third, administrator, and then fourth, special ed and GT meet with those grade level PLCs. Um, and then on Friday mornings, I meet with the interventionists just to kind of review the um outcome of those PLC meetings and the notes and just to kind of keep the communication open and running. We have care team every Friday with our grade levels alternating every other week. And this committee consists of me, the counselor, social worker, um all the interventionists, and we, and a grade level of teachers. We usually, we, like I said, we alternate it, but the teachers come and we just talk about students they're concerned about, students we've been concerned about, just checking in on kids who we decided are going to receive intervention and just talking about their progress and where they're at and if there's anything we need to tweak for them. Um, every, last year, students third through fifth grade had a data folder, and this year, we expanded that first through fifth. I had a committee this summer that aligned our um data collection folders for the students. And so they're all vertically aligned and um every student now has one. And then students in third through fifth grade, when they're talking about their goals for those data binders, before, we were just looking for improvement. So if they made a 185 on their reading map, we wanted anything above 185. But the way, um, now we're looking at a more specific goal that shows for sure growth, is, so to speak, in MAP and in um MAP and STAR. And so we don't just want a little bit of growth. We want enough growth to show that they've made progress um in the grade level. And so we're looking closely at those goals and making sure they're specific enough where the student will be able to show growth at the end of the year. And then we also increased our um win time to an hour. So um if students are needing math intervention and reading intervention, they can access both of those interventionists during that time. Um, I made some faculty assignment changes according to experience, which I think, um, I've already seen the results of that. Um, put some very experienced teachers in third grade and they're off to a great start. Um, we are going kid by kid and looking at their areas of need and then determining how can we service them best? Do they need to work with um a math interventionist? Do they need to work, maybe they receive special ed service and they're going to get some resource time, but then could they also use some intervention time with Mr. Vubal? And so we're really carefully looking at the needs of the students individually. Um, we, our attendance committee has developed um an incentive program for free dress to encourage kids to be at school on time and stay all day with us every day. Um, our school-wide PBIS program is um really going strong. We have expectations for all the common areas and we thought about going to the next level this year where students can earn wildcat cash or bucks. But we weren't sure if we were 100% with the staff yet. And so the PBIS committee decided, well, why don't we let the teachers earn bucks? So when we are in the hallway and I see a teacher's class in line at the restroom following the expectations, the teacher gets a buck and then we have a menu of what teachers can buy for their class. So that was kind of our next step, and then we'll move on to the, the, where the students earn the bucks. But I have a student that's new to Canada from another district, and he laid out his program that he had at his previous school, how he um earned bucks and the store that they had and what he could buy. So I've got a, I've got it in there on some suggestions on how to take us to the next level. I was very grateful for that. Um, every week, I send a smore out to the staff, just going over our campus initiatives, district initiatives, research-based strategies, topics, upcoming events, a calendar, a month-long out, just to keep us all on the same page. And then our teachers have done a beautiful job switching over from Fontas and Pennell to Amplify for our reading, English Language Arts curriculum. Um, some other things we've just added, we, when we do common assessments and map testing, when we look at those results, we want to color code them into masters, meet approaches, high and low, and does not meet high and low to kind of match the ratings of STAR so they can kind of start to maybe understand their goal better if it speaks that same language. And then we have invited our parents to add their clever, the clever app to their phone or device at home. So students can have access to all their digital, online resources that they use at school at home also. Any questions? Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So this, the CIPs are going to be posted for everybody to read, right? So I suggest, I did read them all. I read them every year, it's nothing new. But on page nine of the actual CIP, um problem statement one and the root cause. I understand the intent, I think, but the way that it's written, I think y'all need to read.
Okay.
And see how that wording could be.
Okay. On my campus.
More positive. And I know it's a committee. I know you don't do it all by yourself, so as a committee.
And so you're stating on page nine of the actual plan?
Yes, page nine of 27, problem statement one.
Okay, I will definitely look at that.
Any other questions?
I'm glad the win time is going to be an hour now for the interventions.
It's made a big difference, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you may notice that our um junior high principal looks different than she did at the last meeting. Um, Ms. Bruce scheduled a vacation months ago, and so whenever she got the date of this meeting, we talked about it. And she, I would like to introduce Mr. Seven, she's the counselor at the junior high, and she's going to go over the notes of the plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alrighty, um, so for GO1 at the junior high, um, we strategically looked at our master schedule to increase instructional time in the core areas this year. Um, and then we also added, we used to have advisory every day or, and this year, we have it once a week on Fridays, but it is very um specific and targeted to also include time for students to look at their MAP goals um and set them based on how they're progressing throughout the year. Um, with teachers, our administrators are meeting with them to drill down to specific subpopulations um and their needs in regards to their performance on STAR and MAP and move towards meeting their goals and making progress. Our teachers are also using um the HQIM district resources, Amplify Carnegie STEM Scopes and DBQs to ensure that our tier one instruction um is at the level that it needs to be and all teachers are um lesson planning and correlating that together. In our academic courses, we are also incorporating writing in every subject weekly um to increase um students' writing abilities and their critical thinking across all content areas, which will correlate to the new writing um requirements of STAR as well. For GO2, uh we'll continue our communication with families and stakeholders through blackboard, Outlook, emails, phone calls, weekly smores as well, um from our principal for teachers and families. And then our teachers also um send out their monthly. And then our teachers also, um, send out their monthly grade level newsletters to their families as well. Um, this year, we are adding, um, to our PTO meetings, different showcases for different, um, activities that our students are involved in on our campus to increase parent participation. Um, and teachers also, um, are to submit to positive office referrals so that, um, our, our students and parents are getting a lot more positive feedback, um, throughout the week. And then teachers also make, uh, five positive phone calls per quarter as well. Um, and I'm sorry, I went to goal two. Forgot to say that. Um, we are also, um, explicitly teaching organizational skills during our weekly advisory class. Uh, we're utilizing the Avid Strategies campus-wide so that all of our students have, um, binders with dividers for each subject as well as a planner and are expected to write down, um, different things from their classes so that we have continuity in communicating with parents daily on what students are doing, what their homework is, um, so that everybody is working together collaboratively. Um, we will also, um, continue to offer and participate in fine arts and athletics for UIL. But this year, we are also looking to participate in academic competition as well. Um, so we look forward to our students participating in that again. For social, emotional, uh, wellness and safety, um, we are campus-wide capturing kids' hearts and being very intentional about using the four guiding questions to redirect behaviors that helps, um, our teachers and students build relational capacity. Um, all teachers are also implementing a SCL component in our weekly advisory that goes along with the monthly lesson that they're getting from the school counselors as well. Um, campus-wide, we wanted to improve campus culture. And so we wanted to make sure that all of our staff feels heard and has a voice in what they are doing every day um, and how we're moving towards meeting our goals. So this year, we have campus committees where all teachers, um, and staff members are on a committee that correlates with our CNA and CIP to help plan, um, different things on the campus, but also help track the data that we'll use to, uh, complete and compile what we're needing and what we're seeing each year. Um, and finally, uh, we want to make sure that students are maximizing their time in class. So we are using a new e-Hall Pass system, which is a digital way of students asking for passes. Um, but it also helps us track how many students are in the hallway, how many students, um, are out together, how long they're out so that we can continue to encourage them to stay in class, learn what they need to learn and really maximize their time in the classroom. Are there any questions?
I only have, I only have one question about the e-Pass.
Yeah.
Uh, how does that impact the teaching time of the, of the teachers? Is it, I mean, how is that done?
So it is, um, an app through clever. So the teachers have the same app that the kids do and the students can ask for a pass. They just press a button, the teacher can see it on their computer or their phone and release that when they're ready for the student to go out.
I just wanted to make a comment. I love, um, seeing under the measures of success, all the percentages. So that we're not just going to monitor, show an increase, it will increase. You've got percentages in there and I love that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Can you push the button for the e-Pass?
I was just going to make a, a, a positive comment to say I am loving your Facebook page.
We're trying.
The pictures and, I mean, everything and just insights into the classroom. And, um, I think that ties in with these goals, whether you realize it or not, because parents can be connected in with this school too, um, via all of that, so.
Yes, there's a lot of great things happening at the junior high.
Oh, I know. So I'm glad. It's nice that everyone gets to see it.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone left?
It's the shortest handout you'll ever get. All right, uh, we, uh, we aligned some things. Uh, this is kind of a little bit different order than the campus improvement plan. So we've looked at some of our top priorities that our, uh, campus committees have identified for last year. And I said, number one, or the top, really, the top three right, or top three in goal one are about student achievement. And so, uh, first of all, we know that in any of our reports right now, it was just a few years ago, we were well above the state average in, in meeting CCMR criteria. But specifically in CCMR criteria, I'm looking at college readiness. Uh, we have seen those numbers go down and that has to do with performance on TSI, ACT, SAT, S, uh, AP, dual credit completion, completing an on-ramps course and all the different ways that they do those things. And so we have, uh, increased the opportunities for students, but we knew that we need a more strategic plan to reach some of those goals. And we also needed to provide some new opportunities that we haven't had in the past for our kids to meet those standards. Uh, we have, uh, we, we have done several things. First of all, we, this year, we have gotten pretty aggressive with scheduling to make sure that early in the year, we test, first of all, we're going to test at a younger age a little bit so that we can start getting, um, some baseline data earlier so that we can respond when students don't do those. Every eleventh and twelfth grader on our campus this year will take the TSI math and reading. Uh, the seniors already took the reading. Uh, if they have not met the standard, uh, but we will have all the juniors tested by February fifteenth. But all seniors will have a test and a retest opportunity in reading before the end of semester one. And so with that, uh, we also have to have plans to respond, what do we do when they don't, if they don't? And, and other thing, we do have a fall SAT day. Uh, we are giving every kid in ten through twelve the opportunity to take ASFAB. Uh, and so, uh, that, that has not, uh, been the case in the past. And so we are planning those in. But one of the things that we've done in our scheduling and, and structuring, there is a, a prep course called, uh, through Texas College Bridge. It's an online prep course where our students can go in and, uh, take a prep course like they might at the, uh, community college level, but it is online and once they complete that, they will meet the, uh, state standards for having met that college readiness preparation period. And so we are embedding that in some of our core classes I've listed there in that first column. And so those are some of the, the steps that we're taking along with some other things, uh, to get the credit, uh, college readiness criteria. One of the things we actually brought in and started this summer was some opportunities for kids to take some prep courses through an outside company called Mastery Prep. We actually, uh, we, we actually arranged for quite a few. We had a pretty good turnout for SAT, so hopefully that's going to pay dividends with some of those kids. Uh, we are also going to look at bringing those back, maybe perhaps this fall and into the spring, uh, to give some kids some opportunities for that. We have a lot of free resources, but I think we need these in-person opportunities to prep kids for what the tests are and testing strategies. So, uh, that can obviously increase performance. But those are just some of the sets of, of, of things. I'm just going to pause there. Does anybody have any questions on that one? On the strategies we're using? I'm going to go back to the next group. We've, uh, the next two, I know that, uh, in one of our last board meetings, Ms. Moot brought up the thing, what are we going to do about closing achievement gaps? And this is, this has been difficult for a while. And, uh, I've listed three of our groups that have performed, uh, poorly here the last couple of years. And they're, uh, they're very much interrelated. But, uh, the largest growing group on our campus right now is in box number two. That is our EB students, emergent bilingual students. At the high school, I believe we have between eighty-five, ninety here early on. I'd have to look at our numbers, students, uh, on our campus. And we have, uh, over twenty languages spoken in our campus. And we also are seeing a growing phenomenon at our high school campus where we have a lot of first timers in our country. Uh, kids that are coming straight to our high school from a variety of continents and from a vari- speaking a variety of languages into our high school. We've had to restructure what we do at our high school. We, we are not getting very good performance, but we were, I th- I don't think, uh, this being the, uh, we are serving them much better this year. We have a new, some new elective courses called elder courses. Uh, basically what we've done is we've aggressively scheduled kids into the correct placement, uh, VSOL classes combined with those elective courses. Uh, they are getting about ninety minutes a day, plus some of those might even be getting, uh, some preparation for, uh, STAR testing with their accelerated learning. But what we're seeing is that we're putting much more in emphasis and building that into the schedule to get them extra time and assistance for, uh, English language development. And so this is kind of a newcomer model within our high school, uh, as, as you might see in a big school. But it, uh, we have also, uh, in- invested pretty heavily in some professional development for the teacher serving that, that, that thing, that right there. And then, uh, of course, we are looking at closing the achievement gap. Uh, we know that our Hispanic and African-American students in the last couple of years have underperformed. That was not so much the case a few years ago, pre-COVID. And so, uh, that, those gaps have widened and, uh, we have, uh, we are working towards those. One of the things that we did in our campus needs assessment, our presentation in this room, we know that in, in, in our district, we've identified, and I said, who's more likely to be economically disadvantaged? That's a group that's there. We know in our community that, uh, our African-American, Hispanic students are, are, are more likely to be economically disadvantaged. One of the things that we know that we're seeing right now is that we are going to have to serve their sov- uh, social, emotional needs uh, to get to some of the learning. We have, uh, we have done some things. We've added a halftime crisis counselor right now on the campus and also, uh, a halftime, uh, services coordinator to come to our campus. We have our CI social worker and we've been working that with them to get some of our students and some of our higher percentage at-risk groups, uh, uh, referrals to those programs so that we can get them served in those areas. Uh, we have, uh, we, we did, we know that during the course of this year, we'll be higher than the state average with the number of foster students in Kennedale ISD. I even said military connected and, and, and then, uh, with some of our other subpopulations here that have been struggling, Hispanic and African-American, if they're economically disadvantaged, we're trying to get to them quickly to get social services. Uh, and so the other thing is that, uh, we have also worked with students. We've, we've built quite a, an assortment of spreadsheets and things to, uh, do things like our accelerated learning and MTSS courses uh, to get the kids that are not meeting state standard on, on assessments. We are trying to get them built into the school day, that remediation for accelerated learning. And so we've got, we've kind of got quite a var- variety of different kind of qu- uh, classes and options. We have a twenty-minute study hall built in our master schedule that would, that we can fit some of that learning in. Uh, but, uh, we're trying to aggressively get those kids in a good position to receive extra help where they need it, especially in math and reading. And so, uh, but we have not, we, I, I will never forget science or social studies, uh, as, as I find those equally important in child's development. Uh, we are, just to let you know, we finished our MAP assessment beginning of the year. Uh, we got, I think, in one of our grade levels, I know that, uh, Dr. Allison had reported to me, we tested every kid but seven, or all the kids but seven in one grade level in our ninth, ninth grade. And, uh, that, that's a pretty good testing day right there. So we've got a good run of, of data. And now, um, I know I met with our administrative team. Now we're going to get that to students and parents next week. And so we're working hard to make sure everyone's informed. Also, that's important in building those relationships. Okay, goal two, we must improve attendance, truancy and tardy rates. This is, I said, this was our number one campus goal, looking at all those groups and everything. I can look at attendance and truancy rates as being directly correlated with some of those, some of, some lower performance among our students and, and some of our key groups. Uh, we, we were in the top quartile in two thousand nineteen, uh, when we got four academic extinctions. Our attendance rating at our high school helped us get those academic distinctions. We are closer, instead of being near ninety-six percent, we are closer to being at ninety-three percent. We gained about a percentage back last year, but it is still, uh, two percent. It's, we, we need to go up two percent and get back to where we were. I'm hoping to get, at least to get to ninety-five this year. It may take us a year or two to get there. But guys, we've had chronic, uh, tardiness, chronic absenteeism is a big, is a big problem in the subpopulations I, I, I just talked about. And, uh, in, 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 in all of our populations right now. But, uh, this is one of the problems we have to solve. We've got a electronic system to help with that. We've increased the frequency of our contacts. I work with our PMS coordinator, Lisa Walsh, to get our contacts going out earlier so parents are aware. We're using text messages, we're using phone calls. Ms. Moot, you may have gotten one of those, okay? Uh, and, and Dr. Douglas may have gotten some of those, but we're using emails, phone calls, text messages. We have a system for tardies. We are, we have a system for, uh, not just absences, but also truancy when they have unexcused absences. And we are, uh, meeting with parents right now and scheduling meetings to get those. We're also becoming more aggressive when we can't get parents and students' attention of getting kids earlier this year into, uh, truancy court if necessary to get help from the judges that are there designed. Uh, and, and again, they don't try to do punitive things, they try to do corrective things and, and try to get kids' attention that way. So we're, we're trying all things and we got to have incentives, just like everybody else. Our kids have got incentives. Right now, in community and schools program, they are working, especially kids in that program, or they are doing, uh, an attendance incentive with kids in that program. But also she's helping us with some campus-wide initiatives for attendance incentives among students. We've had high retention rates the past year in ninth and tenth grade. Uh, we, our student retention rate, meaning they're held back because they're not getting as number of credits, has doubled in the last, uh, since COVID. And so, um, with that, I say ninth and tenth grade. At this point, three years after COVID, we have a lot of students that are classified still as ninth and tenth graders that should be in our upper cohorts. Our retention rate, uh, is highly tied to, why are these retention rates so high? Well, a lot of that is tied to attendance. We have high numbers of students we identified losing attendance, um, because of absences and, and all of those things. And we have makeup programs. And so we've been actually tracking of the kids who need that, what percentage last year came and got their credits back. And so I think, uh, even in the spring of last year, I believe we were at eighty percent and we still had to get kids to come in the summer. So, uh, uh, that is real, I said like that, we've got to get these kids back in school and that has been a battle, okay? Uh, it is an ongoing battle. But, uh, with the retention, uh, we've, we're doing a lot with those. Uh, we are ramping up our communication processes and our, our MTSS processes to have meetings, communicate with each other, uh, and, um, really bringing back some good old fashioned, bring, let's get the parents back to campus and get these face-to-face meetings going. Uh, and I know I had several yesterday and we're trying this. Uh, we've got to increase, uh, our participation rates. This is just a little, on a different note, goal two, we've got to increase participation rates, uh, get our parents back in. Kennedale's always been good with parent participation. And sometimes on different campuses, it's been target areas and, you know, we've always had good band boosters. You guys know we have the best. Uh, I've got to get some parents back into key areas. One of those is my campus advisory team, our site-based team. Uh, we had to also re- get some involvement back with PTO and prom. Those numbers are really high right now, early on. So we've took some initiatives, I've listed some things there. Uh, but I still have got to get better recruitment on our campus-level committees. And then also some volunteer opportunities, parents have been asking about, uh, on our campus. I've got, I've got a guy coming in to volunteer and I'm going to have him work with our chess club. I'm trying to find some unique ways to get parents involved in a, some not-so-typical things at a high school level. All right, but, uh, we know that we have, we are watching, we, we track data. I know Dr. Vu has a graph for everything and, uh, has done a great job. But one thing's, we track weekly our, our equity and our discipline placements. And so, uh, we, I, I feel like at the high school level, we've gotten a lot more equitable over the last three years. I think our data would show that, uh, and, and some things. And so I just want the board to know that we're still watching. This is always a goal, is to promote our fairness and use of placements and, and those things. We know they're tied to, um, tied to negative things later, uh, if we u- overuse those in our society. Uh, but, uh, this is always a goal, we're always aware of this. And, uh, even though I feel like we are more equitable campus, we always, every year, have a different group of kids. And I think that needs to be a goal of ours, uh, already a report. We have gotten close to becoming off that list, uh, several times. And I think this year, right now, we are in pretty good shape early on. So I hope we keep it up. But, uh, we, we have a new level and this is working, this is not just us, but we are doing some things at the campus level I've listed there. But a lot of this is coordination and consistency across the district. When we have a DAP placement right now, uh, we have added, uh, the district has added a different, another level, uh, of, of review. And that is a district-level, uh, review committee for DAP placements. And so, uh, to, to promote and, and ensure fairness amongst our kids. All right, we, uh, we have got to improve teacher retention. Uh, we did have an increase in that at the high school last year. Uh, I've put some other things in there and, uh, that we need to do. And, uh, part of that came from you, adopting competitive salaries. And that's, that's part of the overall plan. But, uh, we need to do some more positive recognition systems on our campus. Also work on our campus plan, make sure our teachers and kids feel safe at school. Uh, but right now, our goal is eighty percent retention rate or greater. I'd really like that number to be closer to eighty-five. I think that would put us, put us in, in really good shape. But, uh, if we can get to eighty, uh, back from where we have been the last couple of years, I think we are near eighty over our total staff this past year. But I'd, I'd really like to get in between eighty, up to eighty-five percent. And if we get there, we really can stabilize our staff and do good things for kids. Well, the last thing we need to do, and I think another campus mentioned this, what's always difficult is a high school principal of a four-A school is finding time for your teachers to be able to plan together during the workday, okay? And, uh, we, you know, with anybody that's been here, we, we cherish a lot of things in Kennedale ISD. One of that is we have a lot of programs and a lot of opportunities for kids. With all those opportunities for kids, that requires, um, usually some, a lot of purpose for some of our teachers and some things like that. But finding common planning time is hard when you have an eighth-period day structure like we do and with the number of minutes that we do. We do have a twenty-minute study hall. Uh, we have moved, uh, to a co-teach model with that. We have two teachers assigned to a, kind of a larger group of kids, twenty-five or so kids. Uh, but I've given each of them two days a week off during that twenty. But I've given each of them two days a week off during that 20 minutes to meet with each other during the day. And so early reports on is, hey, it is, it is, we will start from there and go from there, but every teacher on the campus has that. They at least got twice a week to meet with their PLCs, do some, some planning, some quick data discussions and things like that. So, any questions?
Unnecessarily a question, but I did have a comment. I'm, I'm really pleased about the way you broke down the different subsets regarding challenges, you know, for the struggling students.
Yes, sir.
And in addressing their social and emotional needs that they have. So I'm excited about that and I'm really looking forward to hearing the impact that, which, of what you do to how it moves those numbers. So just looking forward to that.
We've tried some different things. I know I've got, I've got, we tried something last year. Our social worker that was within the CIS did, it was doing some new things with us. She had a group of girls that she worked with, had a 16-week program and worked with girls during A, B, and C lunch. It was 10 per lunch, about 30 girls. We are moving with a different structure, similar to that with each of our counselors. One is going to start with students who were on our retention list the year before. And so these seem to make quite an impact. I hope they do. Okay, getting kids there and referred and getting them up to need that, that is, that's where we're trying to coordinate and, and do the best we can.
Any additional questions?
No additional questions.
All right, thanks, Gus. Thank you very much.
That might be the fastest report you have ever given.
That is because his packet is the biggest.
He does have more to report on. I will give him that.
The principal's got a pep talk this morning at our principal PLC about really being specific and targeted. I am here to go over the district improvement plan, which is, as we described, or as I discussed earlier, meant to be mutually supportive of the campus plans. So you have a copy of this presentation. You have a copy of the improvement plan as well. So I am going to go through this very quickly for, out of respect for everybody's time. At, at any moment you'd like me to stop and answer questions, I'm more than happy to do that. So as I mentioned earlier, we started with a comprehensive needs assessment, which is, it's just, the screen went off. It went black. It's okay because I can read here. It was analysis of needs formed, it was, pardon me. We had a comprehensive needs assessment that happened in the spring of 2023. It was, threw me off when this, this screen went black and then that one too. Here's some things that I can tell you off the top of my head. We, so some of the things that the principals mentioned at their campus level is happening district-wide. So we have one more year of these additional grant funds that we received after COVID. So with that, we've added social workers. We've, we've brought in the e-hall pass as a way to just monitor student attendance and making sure that they're in class. There is something that we are looking at using federal funds to bring in an attendance recovery program that takes some of the burden off the administrators so they can spend more time being instructional leaders. That's something else that we're going to be looking at. Thank you. Thank you. That's something else that we're going to be looking at. We have one more year of having these additional funds. And so at the end of this year, we're going to have to take a, a hard look at all the different things that we brought in, these additional supports, to make sure that they are, you know, having the intended effect and impact that we've anticipated. But we're going to have to trim some different things. And so that's something you'll be hearing about more this summer and next fall. So this is from our district dashboard that's also linked to our website. It's updated regularly. And just as a quick snapshot of what it looks like in Kennedale, but I wanted to give you some, I wanted to dive deeper and give you some interesting graphs to think about. So I put this together and it wasn't something that I was planned, but as I was looking at it, I said, that is very interesting. So if you look at our enrollment, it's 2019 to 2023, as our enrollment is going down, the students who are eligible for free and reduced lunches is going up. It's almost a perfect parabola, which is not what I expected to see, but it's very interesting. And so I started thinking this morning during the principal PLC, I wonder what it looks like at the state level. Is this a Kennedale problem or is this something that we see across the state? So it's not exactly the same, but this is something that we're seeing across the state. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the 2020 because the students were at home. So the state reporting out that they are enrolled in school, I have some questions about that. But you can see that we are, they are going down. Also, the enrollment continues to go down. And across the state, the students who are eligible for free and reduced meals is also going up. And so there's a lot to be said about students who are enrolling in private schools and families that are choosing homeschooling. And I can only speculate about that, but I thought that this was an interesting visual to think about how things are changing. In terms of our ethnicity, I started with 2018 and went to 2023. You can see, and I've said this before, one of the strengths of Kennedale is that we are very diverse. There's not a single group that have, you know, dominates different activities and different thoughts and initiatives. And so, but you can see that there is some evolution in the ethnicity as well. Language is spoken in home. So in 2018, we had nine and as of last spring, we had 18, which is, which is another interesting development. So in terms of our strengths for our demographics, overall, we have a very diverse student population. We have experienced staff. And we still have student-teacher ratio that is lower than the state average. I presented the assessment data to you last month. So you can see this, we did see some growth specifically in middle school math that we're proud of and we want to replicate again. This is just a different graph of the same information that I shared with you last month. It's more compact. So you can see it goes from 2019 to 2023. In the 2023 line, if it's red, it means that there was a drop. If it's green, it means that there was an increase. And if it's yellow or orange, it means that it was either exactly the same or very close to the same. So we have math, reading, language arts, social studies and science. And so as I said, this is what I presented last month and you also have copies here. In terms of our programs and processes, overall, we've had a strong increase in just data-driven decision-making processes. Overall, we're using data to make decisions. We're not basing the things that we're doing in classrooms and on campuses based on how we feel or what we think to be the truth, but we're using metrics to measure those things. There is a big push this year for ensuring that all of our students have access to high-quality instructional materials, that all of our students have the opportunity to be exposed to and learn grade-level content. And then we have supports in place for students who don't learn it as fast, quickly as others. And we have supports in place for those of, those who are ready for enrichment. And so that's something that we've been focusing on this year. Again, we have ongoing professional development. We had something today for STEM scopes because in walking around classrooms, we noticed that we had these great materials in place, but not all of the teachers knew how to use them as effectively as they could. And so we brought in some teachers today to do that. Our big priorities for this year continues to be a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Everybody in Kennedale, every student who enrolls has an equitable opportunity to learn and that our scope and sequence is teachable in the time that's available. We want to make sure that we have aligned tier-one instruction. It's a lot better and easier to teach it right the first time than to have a group of students who need additional support because the tier-one instruction isn't as strong as it could be. And with that, the ongoing monitoring and accountability. It's not just providing the support, but it's also ensuring the accountability is there as well. And you'll be hearing more about that, I think, throughout the rest of this year. And then as many of the principals mentioned, strengthening home-school partnerships. The education of a child truly is a collaborative endeavor and it's something that we need to recognize and also tap into because we have parents in Kennedale who care and who want to help, but sometimes they don't know what options are available to them. So overall, you'll see, we have the goals. The goals were approved by the board in 2020. I have that, I have that written in the notes that you can see. We have these three goals. And when you look at the performance objectives, so the goals are long-term goals, so you think five-plus years. When you think about performance objectives, they're also goals, but they're annual goals. And then beneath each performance objective, you have specific strategies. And so our emphasis this year on our performance objectives, our annual goals and our strategies is on building capacity, working cooperatively, really focusing on pedagogy over technology. So pedagogy is the driver and technology is the accelerator. And just making sure that we have systematic processes so that we, we don't drop, we don't miss pieces along the way because we have systems in place. So overall, you can see each performance objective as it aligns with the different goals. The first goal is about student achievement. And so our strategy, strategies include access to curriculum through the toolkit. We're strengthening our MTSS processes and structures. And we have implemented, we started last year and we are really emphasizing it this year, specific data review and analysis protocols as well. We brought in the counseling department. You heard from Dr. Devlin last spring. We brought in Zello to focus on CCMR and making sure that all of our students are able to recognize their strengths and put a plan in place so that they have some, a goal for after they leave high school. And we're looking at our CTE courses as well. We are promoting professional learning opportunities and ensuring that we are providing support to the teachers in form of resources, but also in the form of professional development and aligned assessments. We've strengthened our communication efforts over the past five years, at least since 2019. From what I've seen, we have very consistent schedules for the campus newsletters, for the district newsletters. I, I myself do not get as many parent phone calls just with questions about what's happening or not understanding things. And so I, I do credit the principals for being very specific and reliable in their communication with families.
Can I just say one quick note on that that I want every, all the principals to hear too? Because you guys have gotten so good at that, I've noticed now, even on like Kennedale Moms, someone will ask a question and other parents are very quick to say, it's in the newsletter, here's the screenshot, here's the Facebook post. So it's, I'm like, oh, thank God. So it's nice that everyone else is seeing all of your hard work and reminding friends, check these other places before, you know, because it's there.
You all have done a great job with that.
Yeah.
Truly. And we do try to model it at the district's level as well. So the principals, they have, you have your monthly map and you have your weekly smore and you have all these different pieces. And so we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page because sometimes there's miscommunication and it's not intentional, but people hear different things. And so we want to make sure that everything is in writing. In our special programs, we started this last year and we're going to make them even better this year, is that in some of our special programs, we have parents who want to be involved, but being part of the PTO, they didn't feel as connected. So we had various meetings within our department. So for example, Ms. Roll, she has a special education pact where students who, so parents of students who are in the special education program can come together, talk about, you know, different resources, different challenges. And just seeing that last year and seeing the parents and they were engaged and they were enthusiastic, it was really, it was heartwarming. And so we're starting that with gifted and talented, special education, our English learners. And we're going to continue to grow those particular parent groups. We are working to increase participation. You heard about that from the campuses as well, just giving students something to tap into because you very rarely hear a middle school student say, I can't wait to get to school because I want to go to math. It's just exhilarating. You don't hear that as often as you hear, I can't miss school because I'm not going to get to go to band. And if I don't get to go to band, then I'm not going to be able to be in the concert. And so having the things where the students really do feel plugged in and they feel valued is what motivates our kids to come to school and gives us an opportunity. If the kids aren't in the seats, it doesn't matter how strong our tier-one instruction is, they're not going to get it. And then for our performance objective three, again, we're trying to create opportunities for students, community members and families to come together. We had a very successful Raising Highly Capable Kids last week. It was a program for parents, just talking about specific parenting strategies. And so we want to replicate that, do more with that moving forward. The final goal is about just creating a safe environment, a feeling of safety, just emotionally, and also a feeling of safety physically. And so something that you heard many of the principals talk about is our emphasis on positive behavior management. So we brought in chance last year, which is the what. So you are very specific. Whenever the teacher is talking, this is what the students are doing. Whenever you're working in groups, this is what the students are doing. So it's very specific with that. And then we brought it in again for our new hires this year. So it's going to be part of our professional development plan. And then thinking about the why, we have, for our early learning center, we had something called conscious discipline. And the idea is that it's really important to emphasize connection before consequence. You can give consequences to a student, but if they don't feel connected to the people around them, the behavior is not going to change. Capturing kids' hearts is very similar. And so just focusing on building the relational capacity of our staff and also our students through their interactions with our staff. And then zones of regulation is something that's been very successful in the special education classrooms as well. We focused on bullying, not just in preventing it and investigating it, but also being more intentional about communicating opportunities to report it. We talked about, you know, what can we put in bathroom stalls? Where can we put these different things so that if a student doesn't feel safe, they have an opportunity to tell somebody? This is based on our, just our emergency operations plans, our campus safety teams, and just increasing the capacity of those teams and just making sure that they're very specific and targeted in the work that they're doing on campuses. And then in terms of just our professional development, in addition to supporting our staff instructionally, we want to also make sure that they're aware of the different laws around, you know, these various things. So if they're, if you come across a student who is bleeding, what do you do? What do you not do? Those kinds of things. So we put a program in place that monitors. So it gives the list of the courses that the staff completes and then it monitors them and they get an email every so often if they haven't completed it. And so that's something that we're proud of because we, it's, it's been several years in the making. It seems more simple, I think, than it is to actually implement it. In terms of our human resources, as our principals mentioned, you all approved competitive salary packages for many of our staff. So thank you for that. And then our principals are doing a really great job of recruiting in key areas. And we have Ms. Twomo, she's over at Federal Programs this year. She is continuing our new teacher mentor program with Learning Forward. And she's doing a great job with that. I've started linking her new, own newsletter that she's sharing with our new teachers in the admin newsletter, just because sometimes people don't get to see all the great things that are happening after school. And it's been really inspiring to see and the teachers are so happy to be there. It just, it makes me feel good about being here. So in terms of the resources, we have a variety of things. We have our state funding. We have our title funding, which has been around a long time. These are some grants that we have most of them in. We, this is our last year for them. So we have LASSO. It's accelerated learning support. It's provided, you heard about Amplify. You've heard about some of the different instructional resources and aligned PD that goes with that. SR two and three, we've used to buy resources. As I mentioned, we have several staff members who are funded. So we're going to be looking closely at that to really see how we can move forward and continue the great work that they're doing, even though we won't be able to have those particular positions anymore. And then T-Class. We have our Data Fellow who helps with the graphs that everybody appreciates so much and is providing some coaching support as well as instructional materials. So the big idea of, the big idea behind all of these different pieces is that you have to think about success and how are we going to measure it? So Dr. Douglas, you mentioned earlier, I appreciate the metrics. I appreciate the percentages. And that's a really important piece of developing an improvement plan. We must account for the confounding factors. So there are things that we cannot control. We can't control what happens when the students leave our doors and they go home for the evening. We can't control what happens, you know, among family relationships, but there are things within our control. And so when we're focusing on improvement plans, what we've discussed with the principals and what we've been working on is making sure that we, we are developing strategies focused on things within our control. So you can mitigate some of these confounding factors, but you can eliminate them. And just being aware of that and thinking, well, we can't do anything about this, but what can we do with the resources that we have? That's an important piece. What is within our sphere of control and then measure that. And so you'll see that under all of the improvement plans, there's the strategies, expected result or outcome. And so that's where you'll see the measurement piece. And as I mentioned earlier, you have the improvement plans in front of you. They're still in draft form. And next month, when we come together, the board will be asked to approve the performance objectives. And so if there's something, as you're reading through them, perusing them, if you have a specific question, feel free to reach out to me. I can pass along to principals. If you have a specific question about the campus plans, these are always going to be living documents. Our performance objectives are approved by the board. Our performance objectives are approved by the board, so those are set. But our strategies, they are fluid depending on our needs. We have formative reviews quarterly. And so sometimes, you know, we have a strategy, it's not working, let's try something else. And so that's something that you'll have access to, it is posted online. But it's not, it's not something that's going to ever be static until the end of next year or the end of this year, pardon me. So these are some of the metrics that we're looking at. We have our PowerWalk dash, PowerWalk dashboard. We implemented something just this year, a scope and sequence, it's by grade level, by content area. So an administrator can go in at any point, they can say, uh, first grade, RLA, click on it, it'll pop up with a calendar, so you have an idea of what that particular class is covering, just to ensure alignment and equity across the board. We have our program evaluations, the attendance recovery program that I mentioned, and we have different parent engagement opportunities. And so we're working on a way to make sure, to track that more carefully so that we can identify opportunities for growth and improvement. So the idea behind all of these things and trying to be efficient in the information that I'm sharing to you is that we must work together to build a community that serves all students, not just the ones who, you know, play basketball or whose parents come to the PTO meetings. And that doesn't happen by accident. It, it must be very intentional at every level to cultivate this community through collaboration, reflection and shared learning. And that's something that I hope that you see in our plans. There's been a lot of energy and effort and time put into them to make them better every year. And I hope that you see that on the campuses as well, because I know many of you are parents, many of us are parents and we, we're seeing these great things happening on our campuses. And that is all I have for you tonight. And I, that was maybe the fastest I've ever done it as well. But what questions do you have?
No questions for Dr. Voo.
Is point of clarification similar to what I said earlier on page four, your problem statement for enroot cause? Just see how that can be more aligned with that.
Absolutely.
But other than that, I think it's great.
I think that is all. All right. Thank you, Dr. Voo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I think those presentations were great. I, I dare say these are the best that I've heard. And so I look forward to a great year for all these action plans. All right. Well, that takes care of section seven. We now move down to section number eight on our agenda, which is the business items requiring action. So item eight A, discuss and consider approval of design and construction proposal for Wary Engineering for Kennedale ISD Roofing Projects related to the 2023 bond.
Smoke? Robert, you got it?
Mr. President, board members, good to be with you this evening. It's always tough following those kind of presentations, but this is fun stuff too. Little FYI, we've taken components of the bond program, as you know, a big chunk of it was roofing repairs and replacements of high school, junior high in Patterson. And we've elected, I think, more importantly, just because of the specific scope and the economy of scale, to separate that from the actual renovation projects that are going on, it won't affect what's going on there. But it allows us to move forward and perhaps address some very critical issues that you guys have with, with roofing conditions at those campuses. So we reached out to Wary Engineering, this is a firm that you're probably familiar with. We've had success with them on a number of projects. And that, and they've also done comprehensive assessments of all the buildings. So they're very familiar with the, the campuses and the structures. And we asked them to prepare a proposal to do the design documents for those campuses and help us put the packages out on the street for competitive pricing. So the question might be, well, did we bid this workout? This is a professional service, it's engineering, so we have to, we can and should have to engage them based on demonstrated confidence. And so given our history, given our success and given the inherent knowledge they have of the facilities, we solicited a pricing proposal from them. I believe you have three proposals in your packet, one for the high school, one for the junior high and one for Patterson. And they were more than reasonable in their, their pricing. They used our estimated construction cost for the three different facilities in their proposal. Their fee will actually base, be based on what the actual construction dollars come in at, and they're ready to move forward. They've got about thirty to forty-five days, I think, to put those plans and specs together. We can put it out for competitive pricing and hopefully be back to you guys in short order with a recommendation to move forward with those roofing projects.
Questions?
I don't have any questions regarding that.
Anyone else have any questions? Wow, no questions, then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to engage Wary Engineering for roofing projects at Kennedale High School, Kennedale Junior High and RF Patterson Elementary as part of the 2023 past bond election.
Motion by Ms. Villa Gomez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moody. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Robert. And there we'll go to section eight B, discuss and consider approval of procurement method for HVAC and LED lighting upgrade projects.
All right.
Very similar to the roofing. You know, we talked about this through the planning process. We got a lot of good comments back at our community meetings about not necessarily dumping a whole bunch of new air conditioning systems in your lap that you would then have, be faced with addressing another fifteen to seventeen years from now. And so we've, we've actually pulled air conditioning out of the renovation projects as well. And we're, we're trying to put together a program that I think centralizes not just the responsibility, but also the accountability and your maintenance and challenges and warranty challenges as you move forward. So we look towards a single source option in terms of engineering and potentially construction. And we've gone through the various delivery methods with you guys, I think, in a couple presentations. One of those delivery methods that's available to us is, is design build. And there are a number of firms out there in the state that do a design build solution for mechanical and lighting systems for school districts. A lot of times they do it under, under a performance-based initiative, which is going to be difficult, giving our renovation of these buildings and by that, they offer guaranteed savings and that kind of thing. I think there's a little witchcraft in some of that, but there are some very solid engineering firms out there that provide the design and then ultimately as a construction team, the delivery of those mechanical systems for you. And so what we're recommending tonight, before we can actually engage a firm, is to get you guys to consider approval of that delivery method, which will allow us to seek out firms that can provide a turnkey solution to you guys for air conditioning phased out, as we discussed in the bond planning, and address those mechanical challenges that you have district-wide. It's a big ticket item. We were focused initially just on air conditioning, but there are also some benefits to looking at district-wide LED upgrades for all of your lighting systems. That's also in the bond program. But we can do that hand in hand, we're hoping with the roofing work as well as the mechanical work, because as you know, you've got a lot of boxes sitting on top of your roof, on top of your roofs. And it would be nice if we could coordinate those replacement efforts with the work that's going on with the roofing. It won't always match up, but I think it's a good solution to give you a single source for design specific to your individual campus needs and a single source for warranty work as you move forward, working with that design build team to replace your mechanical system. So this is not a commitment of any money tonight, we're just looking forward to an opportunity to provide or issue a request for qualifications for firms to come back with proposals to provide design build services for your mechanical and lighting systems district-wide.
So my clarification, the, you're hoping that these get done the same time, if at all possible?
We're going to try to coordinate as best we can, yes. The, the challenge we have, I'll be honest with you, some mechanical systems are as much as a year out. So we may have an opportunity to start roofing here late in the fall, but we may, we may not have mechanical units delivered for a year. So we're, we're trying to accelerate that process, recognize, and, and separate it from the renovations. The last thing we wanted to do was start a renovation project and then not have the mechanical systems replaced as part of that completion project. So we're just going to peel it off, handle it separately and get, get moving forward with that. And if we can coordinate the two and get that dance synchronized, we will. But irrespective of that, they can still be done independently.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah.
I'm not clear. Explain design build one more time.
So design build is where you, your designer and your builder are actually the same entity.
Okay.
Uh, yes, you have the, the firms that we're talking about, there's Wary Engineering, there's E3, there's several out there that have not just a mechanical design team in-house that allow us to meet all the code requirements and that type of thing, energy code. But they also have a construction arm that works hand in hand with the design team. And it's certainly, when we look at some of these systems, we look at constructibility, phasing, that type of thing, and that construction arm makes a good partner in this type of work.
Any additional questions?
Okay. Kind of like what I hear. Any, if there are no additional questions, then I'll make a motion. Make a motion to, for design build services as a procurement method used for HVAC and LED upgrade project. Motion by Mr. Serta.
Second.
And second by Ms. Villa Gomez. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
We now move to HC, discuss and consider approval of the Southeast Texas Purchasing Cooperative Resolution.
Ms. Rampy? Purchasing Cooperative, aren't you presenting?
Oh, it's, does he assign off line if they're okay?
Can you come down here so they can hear you?
This is a resolution that we do every year, so you'll just sign off on it if you're going to allow us to use the purchasing co-op to increase of vendors that we can use.
And this is one of many co-op?
Yes, yes. And unfortunately, this is one that we have to renew every year. Some are every two years, every three years, but this one is every year.
Can you remind us what is included inside this co-op? What type of products or how do you want to classify?
Hundreds of opportunities for our staff to be able to purchase different types of materials and anything that could be needed in the classroom or even outside of the classroom.
Sure we get better pricing on?
Yes, yes. They, they do all the procuring for us and we just go to their site. They already have the contracts written up for us, they already have the percentage discount written to it for us.
And you mentioned that's, it's renewing, so obviously we've been doing this for more than one year.
Yes, yes.
Any idea how long we've been working with this particular co-op?
Um, which one is it again? Sorry.
Southwest.
Southeast.
Southeast.
Southeast. This will be our second year with them.
Our second year with them. And we're satisfied with the?
Yes.
The experience that we've had with them, so?
Yes.
Any questions for her regarding the co-op?
Okay, then I will entertain another motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution with Southeast Texas Purchasing Cooperative for 2324 as presented.
Uh, motion by Mr. Serta.
Second.
And second by Ms. Douglas. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now move to section eight B, which is discuss and consider approval, designating non-business days for public information requests.
Gee, whatever that means. And this is, and this is the change in the law that basically PIA request that the ten days, you know, and the amount of time, we were out with holidays and everything else. So the legislature has changed it to where now you've only got ten days that, or ten days you can add to your calendar where you can designate it. So what we propose is the first calendar, which is for twenty-three, PIA calendar twenty-three. That covers us from now until December because it goes off the calendar year, not our school year. So it's from that period of time, we have ten days. So that's our proposed calendar for, basically that covers all of Thanksgiving and all of Christmas for the rest of this year. And then the second calendar is for next year. I gotta get back to my next, I can't. Yeah, so now here we go. And then the second one, this covers us from January all the way through December of next year. So basically this calendar will cover us for that calendar year and it shows the, where we would like to have the ten days. Majority of them are cursed on those holidays again, Thanksgiving and Christmas, but we also spread some other ones out throughout the, the year. And I think those coincides with our workdays.
So that means that those days won't be counted towards the ten days that we have to?
For the CIA recording requirements. And all the X-out dates, those are federal and state holidays, those don't count against us at all. So those already are not off the calendar. So the rest of these are just those, those, incorporating those ten days into our calendar.
Because if someone would request something, let's say November seventeenth, the clock would normally start on the twentieth or?
You're on the twenty-third calendar?
Yes, I'm on twenty-third calendar, so. So we, we exclude, I guess, the week of Thanksgiving in this case.
So on that calendar, basically they requested it on the twenty, what?
On the seventeenth, let's say the last day before we go on, before the Thanksgiving week.
So say they requested on the seventeenth, the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, those would not count, so those, the first day would start on the twenty-seventh.
Very good.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Any additional questions regarding the calendar PIA request? Uh, I don't have any, so then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 non-business day calendars for PIA requests as presented.
Motion by Ms. Douglas.
Second.
Second by Ms. Villa Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. So we are now down to section eight E, discuss and consider non-chapter twenty-one contract lists, policy DCE local.
So policy requires that we, you approve the list every year of our non-chapter twenty-one contracts. These are our professional positions and some are non-professional positions that do not require certification, like a teacher, counselor, librarian, which therefore they're not awarded a chapter twenty-one by law. So the reality is, is you just have to approve that list of employees. And we've had that in place for a while now, so.
Missy, are there any new titles that are added to this?
Oh, my goodness. Hang on.
Director of Administrative Services.
Yeah. Tracy's position, which is Director of Administrative Services.
Okay. Clarify, just, I, I just don't know what this means, LSSP?
I'm sorry?
Licensed psychologist, the LSSP is what he's asking about. The school psychologist.
Okay. Thank you. We're good now.
Okay. I didn't hear you very well, sorry.
No worries.
All right.
All right. So, all right, so these are the non-chapter twenty-one contract lists. Okay. Therefore, I guess, starting this school year or is that that your school year?
This, Rob.
It'll be twenty-three, twenty-four school year. All right, any additional questions from anyone? Then again, I'll entertain a motion from someone.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated list of physicians provided non-chapter twenty-one contracts as presented.
This is motion by Ms. Villa Gomez.
Second.
And second by Mr. Serta. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Section number eight is now complete. And we'll move to section number nine, which is superintendent's report.
Okay, so the first item is the enrollment update. So you have on your board book, you have our enrollment calculations for the, up to the current. So we have twenty-two open transfers. Our numbers from this year to last year are down, still seventeen students from last year. But we have been adding, the high school has added, how many have you added at the high school?
We are up to about one thousand and ten students, I know, as of this whole, I believe. So we start first at school, we have about nine forty, of course, that's lower than what we were expecting coming in.
And the other childhood center, yeah. We were?
Two ninety-seven.
Yeah, so we're, we're continuing to grow, Ms. Four.
Five ten.
So I would say that our enrollments are on the rise, even though the numbers that's shown here are down, but they're starting to go, go back up, so.
And we're getting two more at Delaney, right?
I'm sorry?
We're getting two more at Delaney?
Yeah. There's two more over there. Um, so that's enrollment, then we go to attendance. I actually, I know everybody had attendance on their, their reports, but our attendance numbers are actually up compared to what they have been. their reports, but our attendance numbers are actually up compared to what they have been. Um, you know, right now, uh, the high school is at ninety-six point two one percent. We were at ninety-five point two three four at the very beginning of the school, so this is more cumulative now, so it's up. Um, we were ninety-six point one last, or ninety-six seven one last time at the, uh, junior high, we're at ninety-seven point four one, so we're up there. Ninety-six oh three, uh, for the first six weeks, and now we're at ninety-six six seven at Delaney. So, you know, we're, we're inching up, uh, not knocking, knocking it out of the park, but we're inching up and making headway. And then at Patterson, ninety-six point oh nine, and we're up to ninety-six, uh, point eight six. And then, uh, I will say that we're two miscalculations on here. Delaney's total should have been ninety-six point six seven instead of the ninety-five. That didn't add up in my head, and then when I started looking at it, fixed that one. And then, uh, as I said, Patterson's ninety-six oh nine, and now it's ninety-six eight six. And we're looking at ninety for Arthur, ninety point four eight, and then ninety-one point eight three. So I know Arthur had a lot of sickness, a lot of students out, staff out, so hopefully those numbers continue to grow and go up. And then our overall for the, the district, uh, we're at ninety-five point five two, we're at ninety-five point seven six. Now, that's another miscalculation, so, because of the miscalculation up there. All right, and then we looked at our housing units. Uh, we are still at a total of around thirty-nine students, oh, sorry. Hundred and eighteen students, sorry. We've got twenty from Magnolia Hills, two from, uh, the cottages, uh, Hogan's cottages, zero from the Oaks, the landing, um, the town, uh, six, Alta Landing, twenty-four, and Hammont Creek, sixty-six, for a total of a hundred and eighteen. We have thirty-nine, uh, new to district students. The other ones were still in our district, they just moved from, from one place to another in our district, so, all right. And then, that's attendance. Any questions on attendance or enrollment, all right? Then we go to our construction update, so in your packet, you had, uh, a sheet, so I'll give you kind of a construction update. Baseball softball concession stand, uh, has been a chore, I'm just gonna tell you, so, because every time we turn around, we're encountering a different problem. So we tried to shut off electricity when we didn't have a home game. We were only able to shut off the electricity to the baseball concession stand because they couldn't trace where the wires were going to the softball, so that delayed that. So this Friday, we're gonna have to disconnect the power to that again. Uh, the first time we disconnected it, it, we didn't get all of our servers shut down the way we needed to, so it affected our phone lines, our internet service, so trying to reboot that on Monday, so it's just been kind of one, one headache leads to another, headache leads to another. Then when they started excavating, they found that the water line is eighteen inches below, um, the surface and it's projected, where that water line lies is running right underneath the projected side of the, the, so now we're gonna have to reroute the water line to move across. So we've encountered just one thing after another thing. Homecoming happens, so trying to stage and, you know, move the fencing and everything else, they originally had everything blocked off where you couldn't even get through, and we're like, no, hold on, we got homecoming and we need parking, and so we had to adjust some things there, so. That project has not been as simple as, uh, I, I hoped it would be. And so we are, we're progressing and we're on track. They assure us that we're still on track for it, but it has been some, some things that we're, we've had to deal with, so.
I think all.
The next thing with construction would be the repairs on the eight, eight hundred wing of the high school. They have been working at night, they're over there working right now. They're gonna continue to work through the night and the mornings. They predict that they will be done with all those repairs, hopefully this weekend, at the latest Monday, so. So that's what I was just told earlier.
Is there still classrooms being displaced? I think there was one last time.
The only one that's displaced is the EA classroom that was the most affected, the most severely damaged. And so we're hoping to have them back in. I just went in there earlier, th- those repairs are almost finished. They seem to be cleaning up and getting ready to move out, so hopefully we will have them by the end of this week back in that classroom, so, in there. That's been our priority, is trying to get that one finished first. And then the architects' contracts, we finalized all the architectural contracts for the new designs of the new wings and the new, uh, libraries and that stuff, so we've got those finally settled with lawyers and everything else, so we're moving forward there, which leads us to the next thing. We are starting to start our design meetings with the architects to start getting those projects rolling. And then, of course, you heard the thing on the HVAC in the roof, so Robert has already addressed that, so we're gonna be moving forward those projects now, so. So that's kinda where we are on our, our projects and what's coming up, and, uh, any questions on construction?
There's just still a lot happening in the district and, uh, it's kinda, it's, it's exciting.
There's a lot, there's gonna continue to be a lot, so it's gonna be continuous, so, yeah, all right. All right, so no further questions there. I'm gonna move into presentation. I gave you the presentation, you have a copy of it. So the, uh, second handout is basically what I talked about and then the, uh, packet that Jordan created for the handouts that we gave, so that's.
Which is stunning.
Huh?
Stunning.
It is great. I think their, their talent is showing through here.
All right, and so then we, uh, move into the, um, sorry, TSL conference, we got offline here. So the TSL conference, that is the, uh, Texas Strategic Leadership. This is a partnership, uh, that we, or a partnership is a grant funded from TEA through the Educational Service Centers. It's a one-year grant that stems from the Exceptional Schools Framework. Uh, it's tied to, you've heard our principals talking about HQIM, which is basically High Quality Instructional Materials, which the Commissioner of Education is pushing a lot. Uh, uh, there's a lot of resistance to it because of the state's, uh, it's, it's state curriculum and not locally designed curriculum, and so there's been some pushback there, but this is basically, uh, to work with districts to bring in FPI Eureka math, uh, Eureka math and Carnegie math. We, uh, we have already started bringing that in to play. We had that in play before. It's also working with districts toward their strategic plans. We were asked to join the cohort by the service center. Uh, we work with a instructional leadership coach and a data analysis, uh, from the service center that are funded through this grant. That's what most of the, the money goes for, for. Um, the requirement of being part of this grant was to attend a learning lab and classroom observations. Dr. Vu, Mrs. Volding, Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Wamo all attended the lab in Crowley ISD earlier this month. I was unable to attend that one because of the Thompson Academy, which I'll get to here in a minute, so, uh, the requirement for me to be at that kept me from being at this learning lab, so I had to go to the one in, uh, uh, Houston last week, so I attended that one in Aldine ISD. Um, it was pretty intensive. Um, a lot of good information came out of it. Um, you're looking at districts that are, Crowley, I believe, is ninety-three or ninety-five percent economically disadvantaged, and Aldine is ninety-one percent economically disadvantaged, and looking at what these instructional materials are doing to help turn around those schools, and so that's kinda where, what some of that was looking at. But basically, getting districts to look at utilizing those, uh, tho- those instructional materials, so. So I would say that we have done much of this work already and we're much ahead of the other districts. That's what I've gathered from this. Uh, like I said, it's informative, but we've already put a lot of these things in place. We're already way past where they are on their strategic planning. We, we, we've been rolling with this. So what we joined this, this group for, and it's a group of thirty-one, uh, districts from eleven different service centers, so they are all represented in this. Not every, uh, service center has districts that are, that, not every service center is participating and not every district in those regions is participating. So we picked two from, I think, two or three from, from all of the state. And so us and, uh, Azle were picked out of region eleven to, to participate here, so. And sitting and listening to the, where, where a lot of these districts are, they don't have strategic plans, they don't have vision, mission, beliefs, goals, they don't have any of that stuff. So we've already got all this in place. I feel like we're in a, a much better place than a lot of they, they are, so we are basically in it. And while we are, I, I asked a lot of questions, Dr. Vu asked a lot of questions. We were kinda hesitant to join it first, but the reality is, is that we knew that we had things going the right way. We didn't wanna reinvent the wheel. We didn't want them coming in trying to tell us how to reinvent the wheel, so, but we want them to help boost us and move us past kinda the monitoring aspect of where we're at. You heard our principals talk a lot about the Power Walks, the monitoring. We had already brought in the Power Walks, the requirements for the ten, the dashboards. That's gonna continue. Uh, and I, I told our principals at the very beginning in our first meeting, expect to see me on your campuses a lot more. And that's, that's just something that you, we are, we're looking at moving into. We have brought, uh, Ms. West on as an assistant superintendent, so she can take over some of the operations from me, so that I can be on campuses a lot more. And so that's kinda where we're, we're at with this, so. Any questions there? Hopefully I explained that well enough, so, and quickly, so. All right, so moving on to the last one, the Thompson Executive Leadership. So it's important to know the travel dates, 'cause we're about to set some calendar dates on our, for our next meeting, so I wanted you to have those. So the travel dates are October fifteenth through nineteenth, November ninth through the eleventh, and November thirtieth through the twen- the second, because the Christmas and the holiday break, they're trying to put the December one at the very beginning of it. Um, it's pretty intensive, three, it's, I say three days, 'cause you leave on a Thursday, you come back on a Saturday, but it's a half a day on Thursday, all day on Friday, half a day on Saturday, and that's, it's pretty much non-stop, and, uh, it's an honor to be a part of the cohort number thirty-one and I'm excited about it, so. Take off for the opportunity.
Well, executive development is very important.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think we've made great strides, um, from where we were years ago, a few years ago, and we need that momentum to continue, so I think it's worth it.
Appreciate your commitment to doing it.
All right.
It's great.
So, any other questions on, kinda, I covered a lot in a little, in a short time.
With the Executive Leadership Academy, I think you said there was one month when school board members were requested to go with, is that right?
So that'll be the sixth meeting, which would be in March, I believe.
March, okay.
February, March, and, uh, second of spring.
Okay, gotcha.
Not required, it's just they encourage, yeah, strongly encourage.
Be nice.
They'd like to see you there, so. And that's more that visioning and kinda the strategic planning and moving forward, so, so.
All right, awesome. All right, thank you Superintendent G for all of that update information. I think that's great. That concludes section number nine, so let's go to section number ten for board discussions. First thing is gonna be upcoming meeting dates, so noting that you've given us some dates in which you're not gonna be available, we need to take a look at when we are gonna be available for our next meeting.
I would recommend that we stay with the third Thursday of the month, if we can, on both of these two months.
And that will be the?
That's, you're out.
Yes.
The third, which one?
Nineteenth.
The fourth.
The third, yeah, the third Thursday will be the nineteenth.
Of October?
Yes.
Unless you come back early.
Probably.
You're, you're out.
Mr. G's not available that day.
Correct.
So I'm coming back on that night, not that one, so it's.
I would not recommend that.
November and December would be the months, but November is, is because.
Okay.
So we went to the fourth Thursday, that would be the twenty-sixth.
Yes, yeah.
Now, we've got listed.
Unless you wanna go to the twenty-fourth.
We've got listed on here, possible special meeting in October and a regular meeting in October? Was that intentional? Or is that just if needed?
Hang on.
What was this one?
See, on here, it's showing a possible special meeting in October and a regular meeting in October? So was that intentional?
I think that's just always listed.
Or just possible, just as needed, just as needed, okay.
That's a statement.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We're only looking at one date that we need, we only need one date.
So I was trying to coordinate with the, let's not coordinate, the, uh, Education Foundation is trying to do their grant awards and set a date, 'cause they need to come to the board meeting to propose for y'all to approve the, uh, grant awards. So they're trying to set a deadline and all that time, so we were just in a meeting Tuesday night, and so that's probably why I got that on my mind, so I apologize that the dates aren't that.
So can we take a look at the twenty-sixth of October? That would be the fourth Thursday? I'll start looking for everybody.
Good.
Ms. Serta, how about you?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. That's good for me. Ms. Villa Gomez, how about for you?
I can do it.
You can do it. I'd love to hear that. Okay, so we're gonna book that baby?
November should be fine. That's probably the one I was thinking about, it's the third Thursday.
Yeah, 'cause the fourth is Thanksgiving.
So October twenty-sixth at six PM, correct?
Yes.
Very good.
And then sort of looking ahead, November sixteenth at six PM, is kinda what it.
Kinda what it's looking like?
Yes, yes, with our, our regular meeting.
Then in December, I believe, the board meeting on the third is right before the holiday break.
Yes, which would be the twenty-first.
Huh?
Which would be the twenty-first.
Okay.
So on December, it's looking like the third again, which would be the twenty-first.
Well, couldn't be the third, well, I guess it could, because, um, the Thompson Executive Leadership is gonna be November thirty through December second. Oh, well, the third, that, okay, that would be fine.
Yeah, so it'd be the end of the.
She meant the third Thursday, I think.
The third Thursday.
On the twenty-first?
Not the third date.
Yes, which would be.
She meant the third Thursday, not the date of the third.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, Canada doesn't have early release on the fifteenth?
No, we don't need a kid to get school first to meet.
And then we'll meet on the twenty-first?
Mm-hmm.
That's not y'all's late break?
Yeah, so.
Hold on, I'll pull it on.
So we may need to move it to the week before, so.
Yes, that's to the fourteenth.
Thursday, fourteenth.
There's also Sean and Maria aren't here, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Well, we're just projecting it at this point.
The thing is, we're gonna have to send them, or we're gonna have to go, and who can be there can be there, I mean, up for them, or. We're getting to a point where we can't have, we may not be able to have everybody at every meeting, so.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
So I have early release for Canada on the fifteenth, so that means they would be off of holiday, which was technically your break as well.
Y'all don't wanna do it over holidays, so we'll send it before the.
The fourteenth.
Okay, so the fourteenth.
So the fourteenth would be the second.
We'll have a quick, pretty quick turnaround between the meetings there, so.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
December, December fourteenth.
Yes, the day before the early release.
And then what do we have for November?
November sixteen.
All right.
Yes.
Are we everybody good with that?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. All right, so next we'll take a look at ten B. That's the Summer Leadership Institute Session Recap. So every year, the school boards, uh, there is a SLI meeting that we all go to, and, um, I think this year was especially informative, and, uh, we all decided that we were gonna bring back some of the, uh, information that we gathered that we felt was, uh, impactful and share, you know, with everybody, because just like Mr. G shared what he went through and what he got from, uh, his meetings, we think we're gonna do the same, and we need to do the same, right? So, uh, I, my suggestion is that we just move from left to right, uh, skip over me, you know, I'll go last. Since I have, uh, Mr. Glove here, I'll just do the last at the end, and, uh, and then we will just go on down. I'll wrap us up. Is that okay with everybody? Awesome. So Ms. Villa Gomez, the stage is yours.
Okay. So as Mr. Owen said, um, it's a really wonderful conference where school boards are from all over the state of Texas. Some like have this many students, some have, you know, hundreds of thousands of students. Um, so it's really nice to be able to do, to do these sessions, and just to reiterate, um, there's so many to choose from, so this is our opportunity to share with each other what we attended, so that we can all benefit, um, and you get the bonus of hearing it as well. So, um, I always look forward to going to SLI and getting to not only connect with trustees and school districts from all over the state of Texas, but to get to learn from initiatives that they're trying and challenges that they are also facing, which that's always really great. Um, I went to a, a variety of sessions on things. Um, there was an average of, I think, ten per hour, so it's kinda hard to choose off of the little summary. But one thing that, back in June, when we attended, um, that I was really especially interested in on was, uh, one I went to was with Bridge City ISD on how they completely flipped their bond results. I felt like that was really timely, because we just had, it was a very successful bond. Um, however, we had this one section that, um, we wished could have been a, a different outcome. So, um, within one election cycle, they completely, literally completely flipped their results. Um, so it was really interesting to hear what their initiatives were, what their targeted approaches were to how to get that, um, accomplished. Um, so I can share even with the board maybe, um, later on specific things that they found helpful. Um, but, uh, so that was nice. Another session was with Longview ISD and how they connect with their Spanish-speaking families. I know we have a ton of emergent bilingual, um, ESL. So that was, uh, speaking to me. They had some really awesome ideas, including getting a translator for soccer games. This was so neat. Um, and they had, ended up getting a free connection with a radio station, so they ended up using someone that they hired in the district who just volunteered all of his time. He goes to every game and started, and he got this connection with a radio, a local radio station and ended up translating. And that brought in so many families just by having this, um, this venue and this opportunity to hear in their native language what was happening at the game, not only with their child or their friends or neighbors or whatever, but it felt like home, and. And he's, had countless stories of families that would contact him and, you know, because they just, he would describe like a little radio, like they were back home growing up, and it gave me chills listening to this. So not only was it a great way to connect with families, and I don't know who wants to volunteer for this, but I just liked the idea. But what was really cool was through this, it ended up growing so quickly, so fast, this radio program, that they ended up getting people to come to the district and want to sponsor just to be able to be recognized on this broadcast. So they ended up getting scholarships for athletes, new uniforms. I mean, it just like, it ballooned so much more than what they were initially envisioning. So that was kind of cool. I also attended one about board and district unity led by Mansfield I S D. They had a few particular things that I can share later as a board that I thought was neat to kind of streamline things as far as efficiency. A really great one that I enjoyed was, because you know, you go to these and then they give their presentation, they're trying to jam all this stuff, and there's not as much time sometimes to actually interact and really learn from people unless you get their contact information. But one that I really liked was called S L I Cafe, and that was facilitated by a trustee that's been around for over twenty-five years doing this. And the group chose several hot topics, and basically, and I ended up being the secretary, I was up recording. So we'd choose a topic and then everyone would contribute. So we talked about things like four-day work week, four-day school week, what else? Anyway, so that was really neat to kind of really get some bang for your buck in a, a short amount of time to be able to hear from across the board different things that were working and would never work in different areas. I did a few sessions on safety and security. That's always a top priority for all of us here. But one really thing, or last one I was going to report on, was I went to one from Longview I S D and their approach to a health and wellness program. So they came up with an incentive program for staff and had eight hundred of their thirteen hundred staff enroll in it. They ended up giving all of them, most of them bought it, some of them paid an activity tracker, so it became this huge competition. Just like any of us with an Apple Watch, we compete with our friends or family that, you know, when you do a workout or something. Well, theirs was just within the district. And what was really cool and what I can really see us implementing here in Canada I C, you know, we do a lot of like, Delaney does something, or the junior high does something, and campus culture as a campus improves, and you have that camaraderie within your campus. But we don't have as many things, at least that I'm aware of or see, that are cross-district just for staff. Unless you like convocation or some big one or two times a year kind of a thing. But they, through this, one of the things that they instituted and I can see us doing here was they did a district-wide five K. They had it at one of their campuses, they invited all of the staff and their families to come. And one of the promotions they did, you could either buy a shirt or based on your reward activity level points on your watch, you could maybe get it for free. That was another incentive. Anyway, but I loved the idea of doing a district-wide five K to help, you know, whatever morale from everyone in the district in inviting their families. Because a lot of you have your work family, but then you have your home family, so it's ways to.
Look at that, the like, where they, those, the, what is it, the, you want to talk about the rugs where they like throw the.
Oh, the colors, the color rugs, color rugs.
Oh, I know people that would volunteer to color some people with some powder.
Maybe lighting up the students all the way along.
Oh, my gosh, now that would be a good fundraiser.
Awesome fundraiser.
Anyway, so, so I loved that idea because I, I personally would love to see more things happening to increase district relations beyond just campus interpersonal relationships. I know we do things for students that are district-wide, but it's just as important to do things for our staff and staff families. And then what else? Oh, and then the other really nice benefit from this particular program in this district was they saw within six months a massive decrease in people calling into work, people needing to take off of work for appointments for health reasons, because, and then they had a video, they did a panel, and they interviewed like nine staff and showed like before and after with just this walk, like competition where they had lost weight or they were feeling better physically and emotionally, anything. Anyway, that's fine.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Villa Gomez. That was very detailed and I think very motivating, too.
Good, great.
Good job, awesome.
No problem.
All right, so we will now go to Ms. Douglas, who will go second.
Okay. All right, so I, I think I share what Mrs. Villa Gomez said, is we all came back very invigorated by all the different topics and information. So one of the ones that I attended were safety and security, another one was legislative updates. I did bring that for everyone, too, the updated sheet, kind of like what the bill number was, what the specific topic was in the description. Kind of helps kind of know what to, to be referencing. I brought those. One was early childhood goals, because again, of our Early Childhood Center, I wanted to kind of go see what that district was doing. And then I focused a lot on student outcomes, so I took several classes on student outcomes, data, and then making informed decisions. How do we close achievement gaps? And then Chat G B T, which was very fascinating to not, not only did I start using it personally, but it also made me think about teachers using it for lesson plans and students, and so that was a very, I think, timely and informative group, class. And another one is I went to a present, presentation by the H E V School Board and their superintendent. I picked that one because they're one of the A-rated districts, and they always present on sort of their secret sauce, like what makes for a strong board and a strong district and how the board can be part of moving the district forward. So I really wanted to kind of hone in on that. And so we talked about, I think, not only presenting what we thought was informative, but maybe some ideas to implement to move forward. So most of my ideas to implement moving forward came from how can I make myself a stronger board member? And then the team as well, learning from, again, from, from that class. So one of the best practices, if you will, that was mentioned oftentimes is having a meeting twice a month. It seems like for the last several months, we've had to do that anyway, but it really gave an opportunity for a lot more dialogue, a lot more conversation, a lot more questions, so that when we come to the meeting, those are actually more sort of focused, driven on voting versus like all the discussions. So I thought that was helpful. And if there's not a lot of things to discuss, then it's sort of like, again, brainstorming, you know, where, where are we, where can we go? So you can always use that time wisely, and you can always say that we don't have anything. But I think two times a month, I think, would really give us a lot more time as a board to kind of discuss things and, and be moving forward. So I loved that idea. They talked about adding a section at every board meeting, kind of what we're doing now, of just each board member just getting a couple seconds to say, hey, what have I participated in the last month, what have I attended, what have I seen, what, any kind of praises or anything? Because a lot of us are in the schools and the various activities. So just giving a moment to say how we've represented and how we've been out there, what we've seen going on. Thought that was great. Another one that kind of goes along with that is they had like a district events or an activity chart. So I know there's like district things that are planned out for the rest of the year, so not just kind of with maybe the smores of what's coming in the next couple weeks, but on the district level, what is out there for the entire year? And then all of us being, have access to that so that we can kind of click on there, like, yes, I'll be able to attend that P T A meeting, or I will go to that event, or I'll go to that person's retirement, somebody go to that person's retirement. So again, there's a lot of representation from someone on the board at all the various activities, so that we're really out there representing, you know, the community, being the eyes and ears, and being able to come back and report on those things. I thought that was a great way to put it all together, so we could all see where it's at and who's attending what. Loved that idea. They talked about very intentional get-togethers with the board, staying as a strong team, so that you intentionally spend time socializing, doing things together as a team, so that when those hard conversations are there, that rapport and those relationships are still there, but we can still have those hard conversations and make those decisions. So I liked that. Getting weekly updates from the superintendent, sometimes that was in written format, sometimes that was meeting with board members. So I, I liked that idea. And then continuous improvement was my last one, like I said, did a lot of focus on that. And I know we just went over like a lot of campus improvement goals and things like that, but one of the things that they talked about is that every quarter, they really get together and spend one of those, if you will, workshop meetings going over some of the data. So for example, we've said that, you know, attendance is one of our goals, but not just reporting it as a campus improvement goal, and then at the end where we at, or just getting the numbers, but sort of hearing, you know, on a quarterly basis from the campuses, what are the initiatives that we've done? What has that looked like this quarter? Has it worked, has it not? Are we going to pivot for next quarter? And just really tracking those measures quarterly, so that we can hear a little bit more details of what's working, what's not, what's being tweaked, so that when we get to the end result, I guess, we've all sort of been tracking along with the campuses. So I loved that idea, too. So again, those were some ideas on how to strengthen myself. There was also a really good book I was going to bring back, that they talked about all the board members and board governance, maybe reading. And then, you know, I raised my hand, and I think several others did as well, but I do get to go to some training this weekend on, on the board. So I look forward to learning more and coming back and presenting on that.
Awesome, all right. We look forward to hearing that. All right, thank you, Ms. Douglas. So now scoot down just a little bit further, okay? And so now we'll hear from Ms. Moody.
So as everyone has already said, we had a variety of topics to go to, so I'm going to report on two. Ms. Villa Gomez and Ms. Douglas already spoke to two of those things, so I crossed those off my list of things to say.
Can you just mention them so we know that it was important to several of us?
The purpose is to decrease.
I know, but just so we don't.
Oh, my goodness, yes. All right, so the first one was meetings that matter, and then I always try to go to things that I think are going to help as we listen to the reports from our central office leaders and from Mr. G. So the first one is how as a board can we improve, and one with the meetings that matter, they talked about the meetings and how our meetings are to be business-minded, how are we to conduct ourselves according to Robert's Rules of Order. We already have a space for public comments on the agenda and non-agenda, but for the board, if we have questions about something that someone said, then we can address it at that meeting during closed session. So I thought that was, we don't have to wait till the next month, so that was one thing that I put in bold. And then having a specific monthly calendar and activities was what I was not going to say, because it had already been said. Those were the suggestions from the audience and the presenter, so it's very interactive. The people stand up and present, but always someone is, well, what about this, what about that? And then the other districts say, well, this is what we do over here. So that was have the materials to board meetings one week prior to the meeting. So there, I talked to a superintendent, somewhere in West Texas, they usually win, they play Dallas. I can't remember his name, but I can see his face. Their meetings are an hour, but that is because they get all of the material one week in advance. They hold themselves accountable, so if someone didn't read the packet, they say, you're making our meeting long because you didn't read. So holding ourselves accountable, if we get the information well in advance, then our meetings might be able to shrink. The second one is effective superintendent evaluation, and that was from Task B. And it is how we as a board work together to make sure that we are setting clear, measurable outcomes for the superintendent. And then the suggestions from the presenter and the audience is to use a variety of data, make sure that we know and are reviewing the district C I P along with what the campuses are submitting. So even though there are a lot, it's a lot to read, making sure that we are responsible for reading that information, making it fast, focused, aligned, stretched, not short, tracking over time, have opportunities, which was another thing that you two had already shared, opportunities to share and ask questions about what's being presented. How do you know if you're making progress is what Dr. Vu presented with just this evening. And then what information might we provide to our superintendent along the way? So when we do do the evaluation, it's not a one-shot, but it's data over time, it's information over time. So those were the two that I'm going to report on.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. Again, besides all the others, very informative and very passionate. We'll move passion down a little bit to Mr. Serta.
All right, so I, I was able to attend as, as well. Last year, when I attended, because I was new to the board, I didn't get to attend these awesome sessions because I was attending these, these like new to the board, half-day sessions, and then new to the board, second half-day sessions. So this year, I actually got to attend sessions, and one of the sessions that I would like to report on is actually the same one Debbie reported on, is the connecting with Spanish-speaking families in our school district. So I wrote a couple, a couple notes, just so I can remember what I'm talking about. So it is important to build a strong bond with our growing Hispanic community. But with that said, I think it's also important to use this information to work with all our, all our communities, because we can use this and just like scratch out Hispanic and add African-American, scratch out African-American and add the other communities that we work with, that we serve here at K S D. So one of the first things is just understanding the population, you know, their Spanish-speaking community. They make up more than half the U S population, so. So I think that's a significant demographic, that, you know, this, and when we're looking at some of the data that Dr. Vu showed us, I mean, from the first graph to the second graph, I mean, that Hispanic community did jump up a little bit significantly, actually. So, you know, we do have to understand that that is a significant demographic, but we do have to build trust with them just because, you know, a lot of these community members, you know, are a little untrustworthy of some, you know, our leadership out there. Not necessarily school districts, but other types of leaders that are in the community. So we, we do have to kind of go out there, build that trust, and some of the ways they say to build that trust is, you know, go to the churches, where, where the, the sports venues, where they're, where they're practicing at. Because if they see us there, they say, hey, this, this person, this district, these individuals actually care about us. So if I'm seeing you at my so-and-so's soccer practice or football practice, I can't, I can't trust you, I can't talk to you. I can have those, you know, what do you call those unofficial, official, one-on-one meetings with you. That isn't going to get me in trouble because I said something about my nationality or I said something about the things, the issues I may be having at home, that I can reach out to, to, you know, leaders of the school district, so I can help myself out, so I can help my, my child out to become more, more successful. They did talk about, you know, you, we need to have bilingual communication with these people. When we have meetings and we have events, we, we do need to offer, you know, as much as we can, you know, some type of translation for, for that community because if they know that there isn't going to be a translation portion offered to them, they're going to go, I'm not going to be able to attend. Why, why even go? Because I can't understand anything we're talking about, so that's important to them. Let's see, what else did we, so I wrote, like I said, I wrote it down because like this happened back in June, so. And then just, just including them, going where they're at, I think, is, is what they were trying to emphasize in this presentation is, you know, they want to be a part of this community, but a lot of them are new to the community, are new to this country, are new to this, I mean, to this, to this area that they don't, they need someone to just invite them and say, hey, why don't you come out to, you know, parent night? Or why don't you come out to a football game? And then that kind of brings them to our community, and then guess what? They're going to come back to the next parent night, and they're going to come back to the next principal meeting. Because, and I'll, I'll be honest, I think a lot of these community members, they say, when I have a principal meeting, it's a bad thing to have a principal meeting. When I have a counselor meeting, it's my, my, my son or daughter are doing something terrible or something, doing something wrong. So we need to kind of change that, that kind of mindset of, hey, when we invite you out, it's not a bad thing, it's a, it's a good thing. We want to, you know, you know, share our experiences with them in a good way. Okay, I'll move on. I know everyone's waiting on me now. So the next, another session I want to report on is the Texas economy, what is going on and how does it affect my students? Okay, this one I attended because, you know, I, I didn't really know a whole lot about it, and I said, you know what, I'm going to learn a little bit more. So with the Texas economy, it's, it's saying that the school districts, but more importantly, the state of Texas needs to kind of build a path to help us, but we also have to take some of this initiative ourselves because, you know, what is our, our challenge? What is our thing? We want to graduate students, we want to make them successful, we want them to go out into either, you know, post-secondary education, go get a job, go into the military. Those are our challenges, those are the things that they want us to do. So, but how do we do that efficiently? You know, we can't just say, oh, if you graduated, you're going to be good to go. We want to give them the, I guess, the skills that they can take, but we have to do a little research. So they're saying that we need to look at like the microeconomics of the U S. We need to look at the, the local occupational trends of, of Texas, of this region. We need to start looking at what are the future demands. Uh, we need to start looking at what are the future demands of jobs? What are the, the future demands in the tech industry? You know, I, I know we mentioned chat GTP and all that stuff. I mean, five years ago, two years ago, a year ago, no idea that AI was going to take off like it was. So we need to start looking and researching at what's going to be available to my first grader when they graduate from high school. I know that's a big challenge. That's a big ask, but you know, we have to do as much as we can to start making sure that we're preparing that student for after graduation. Uh, and I know we do that. I know we do. I'm not saying we don't. I'm just saying that this is what they're, what they're saying that we should do a little bit more. Uh, we need to work with some, uh, second, uh, post-secondary education institutions, you know, two-year, four-years. And maybe start doing some research on the labor market outcomes. So, you know, those students that are graduating with a two-year, with a four-year degree, with a, you know, a, uh, graduate degree. What are their, you know, labor outcomes? What are they, what jobs are they getting, you know, and how did they get there? So that, that way we can kind of go back and say, hey, these people that are successful, you know, they did this in high school. Or these are the skills that they learned in high school, or they learned at the elementary level to prepare them to be successful for, after high school. And of course, we, they talked about CTE. And I think to me, that was the, the one that kind of hit, hit the most. Because not every student is going to go get a four-year degree, but every student wants to be successful. They want to get a good job. They want to get high paying, high paying jobs. So, you know, there's, there's programs that we offer here, uh, at Canada that can help them do that. Uh, and they're saying that we need to increase those. And I know, you know, it all costs money, you know, it's spaces required. But if we can start increasing the CTE programs, uh, and just making them able to leave with credentials, with micro-credentials, things that they can complete in a short amount of time versus two years versus four years as a full-time student. That will help them, that jumpstart into a career versus a job. So, uh, I know the principals are here and I know I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but that is, that was that session. And then my last session, uh, was building support of local public schools, developing a process to connect with the community. Honestly, I'm glad that we waited to this meeting because when the principals were reporting out and when Dr. Vu was reporting out, I was like, oh my gosh, everything that I wrote down is up on, on that screen. Uh, as far as what, you know, or, or was in the, in the documents that I was given because we do need to connect with the community. Uh, and I see it in the action plans. I'm like, oh my gosh, they're going to do that. So I thought I was going to come in and be like, we need to be doing this. You guys have no idea, blah, blah, blah. And then I get in here, I'm like, oh, hold on a second. They're, they are doing this. So, so I, I wasn't going to, you know, do it that way, but I was just going to say, hey, look, we should do this, but you guys are doing it. So we need to, you know, in importance of community engagement, uh, connect with the community, you know? Uh, social media, which we're doing, news broadcasts, which that one Long East School is doing. Also, they mentioned, uh, providing mailers. I, I know that a lot of people are like, oh, mailing snail mail is, is old school and, and we wanted to send it electronically. But there are community members out there that prefer that type of, that type of mail. Uh, and then also, you know, right now, who are we communicating with? We're communicating with current parents, but we're not communicating with public community members that used to have students here. And those community members want to continue to be a part of, even though their, their children have graduated or maybe have moved on. But they're still here in the community and they still want to be a part of this. So, you know, maybe having like, I don't know, events for the community, kind of what we're having. Again, because you guys are doing it already, uh, like that October Halloween event, that ball festival. You know, not just invite the students and parents, but invite other community members. Uh, they're saying that they want to be a part of. They just need an invite. The churches need an invite. The, the different, uh, community leadership organizations that are in, in the Canada area need an invite. And they'll show up and they will bring candy and they will bring resources to us. And they will volunteer and they will do all those things if we just ask them to, to attend. Uh, but like I said, you know, when you guys are presenting, I'm like, oh my gosh, they're doing that. Checking it off. So. That was it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Serta. That, that was a lot. I think that was probably the most impassioned, uh, recap that we've had so far. Thank you very much.
One last thing. So I wrote this and, and again, I wasn't the presenter. I wasn't the, the researcher. I, I took the notes. So they're saying that, uh, student success is not only about representation as it pertains to teachers, staff and administration. Uh, this just fills the unofficial quota. But they are much more successful when they know that someone genuinely cares for them and listens to them. We hear them, but are we listening to them?
And let me just, since you presented, I forgot you attended that one session with me as well about, um, engaging Hispanic families. So you were my, you jogged my memory of one other thing. It was all about how do you connect with them when you're trying to, um, when you do sometimes have a language barrier? Or they're not checking their email, like you said, or they're, so that's why, um, they're all so family focused. So getting connected at the games was huge. And then, um, you reminded me that, um, at that particular school, they ended up going to two of the biggest churches in town where they ended up going. And they just had one quick meeting with, um, the pastor or the priest and said, hey, we really want to connect with these families. He said, sure. And so he said, set up a table across the street. He announced it at mass. And then he said, hey, the school wants to, you to be successful. They want to have a partnership. So every time it was, you know, whatever frequency, once a month, he would announce it at church. And then they'd all go, there was a line and they ended up connecting with so many people. Anyway, since we're sharing tactics that worked for some.
Awesome. And thank you, Ms. Vigil Gomez, for, uh, reiterating, uh, those takeaways. So two of our board members are, um, absent tonight. So Mr. Glovier did, uh, send me information that he would like for me to go ahead and share with everyone regarding his, um, his big, big rocks from the, uh, Leadership Institute. So he says, my focus during the 2023 Tasby Summer Leadership Institute was on two things. One, I focused on attending classes relevant to safety and security. With new state requirements regarding having an armed presence on every campus, it seemed prudent to explore all of our options. One course I tended focused on the benefit of starting our own police department. And while it was very interesting, I believe the cost associated with it would be prohibitive. Paired with the looming problem of finding qualified people, this did not seem like the best course of action for Kendall ISD. Number two, my other focus was on the sudden rise of AI and how to approach it in education. I'm not opposed to artificial intelligence and have even used myself quite, have used it myself quite a bit. I do see potential pitfalls, but I don't believe they outweigh the potential for good. I see this as something, uh, of being something that can be used by students and teachers in a multiple of ways. And think we should not rush to restrict this tool. Instead embrace its potential. One thing I was explicitly stated in our training in AI is that it perhaps of the greatest concern is the potential to use chat GPT on documents that contain confidential student information. Anything with such information that is shared with OpenAI becomes a property of OpenAI. In this particular scenario, inputting confidential student information to OpenAI would be a violation of FERBRA and could be a huge problem for us. Aside from this, I believe it can be a huge asset to our teachers in their lesson planning. And believe further that anything that has the potential to lighten their workload should be explored. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts. I look forward to seeing you off the next meeting, Mr. Glovier. Okay. So, uh, that leaves me. And since most of us attended, uh, a lot of sessions, uh, together. Uh, there is only one session that I attended that I did not attend with my other cohorts. Okay. But I would like to mention one regarding the HEB and the meeting, attending meetings, uh, to get, you know, to let the population see that we are there to support them. I think it's, uh, they mentioned that we need to attend it not as just parents, but we need to be, it, attend it intentionally as board members if we do. So that would mean making sure that we identify ourselves, that we are in a, a board member role, having on a, uh, our pen or whatever saying that I am a board member. So I'm there in a board member capacity. Okay? So the only other one that I attended was the one that was on the multi-generation, uh, of our, uh, of, of the, of the world, really. And, uh, anybody that knows me know that's a passion of mine. So that's why it was suggested I attend that. One of the things we need to realize is that the people that are coming to school now are growing up in households different from the ones that we were brought up in. And there are certain things that trigger certain images or feelings or, um, you know, uh, understandings today are different from those a long time ago. Uh, and they gave an example. The example was in 1950, 41% of all the households were somehow military connected. Not just military connected, a lot of them had served in the war. Therefore, most households were run very strict. They had, they all followed certain rules and therefore with the schools follow certain rules and everybody was on board with them. As a matter of fact, I believe it was less than 10% of the population had tattoos. Whereas currently, you know, there, I think it's less than 5% of any household currently has any type of connection to the military. And it is much looser. The rules are much looser. Again, working on tattoos now, it's almost 70% of people have tattoos. So if that was something that you saw 20 years ago as a negative, you need to take a look at today and it is just a normal, normality. Okay. So, and it's not just that. It's a lot of other things, you know, that are being done now that are different than were being done 20, 30 years ago. When I went to school. Okay. So I graduated 40 years ago. So, you know, things have changed a whole lot. But that was the only other thing that I attended. But all those things that not only what I attended, but all the board members attended, I think is going to help us become better. Okay. And I think we can be stronger if we input these new ideas and find out which ones will work for us. And which ones, you know, we may have to, uh, tweak a little bit more to make it work for us. So no bad ideas. They're all good. All right. So thank each and every one of you for sharing. I think that was a great session. And that wraps up 10B. And we now move to 10C, Policy Locals, uh, CW, Naming of Facilities. Mr. G.
So this has been sent out a few times. We sent, uh, Mr. Serta's recommendations out to everyone. I only heard back from two of you, um, on that. Uh, it was Mr. Owens and Mr. Glovier. Both are in favor of just accepting it as it is and moving forward. So that's kind of where they are. So I don't know if anybody that doesn't have anything else, it's basically just, uh, then we're going to put that, Mr. Serta's to, uh, Tasby. Let them create that policy and we'll be, have it on the next agenda and we'll have the naming right after that. So.
So, so we'll use the comprehensive guidelines?
The one that you created? Yeah. So.
That works.
You had some edits to it. So I don't know if you sent those to me or not.
I didn't, I didn't know if we were going to facilitate a work session for it. So I just held off on it because I don't want to make edits and then other people have different edits.
No, I, I haven't heard from anyone. And Mr. Glovier's point was he's ready to move on with it. So I was like, all right.
So am I.
Do we need to let the legal see this and approve it? Or is this something?
We sent it to Tasby. Tasby, they created the local policy for us. So.
And it sounds good. It looked good to me.
Yeah. I saw the edits that were in there and it looked fine, didn't it?
No, that's not it.
This is what's in the board here. This is what was sent to us in our agenda.
He didn't add the extra edits because he didn't know if this was.
No, no, no. What he has right there and what we have in our, uh, board book is different.
Mr. G and Mr., um, Owens, that's where the data's coming from. I wrote a comprehensive one from the different boards that had.
That was sent out to all of you, yeah?
It was sent out though, but what's on there isn't the, the last one.
Right. I think so, but it's been communicated to us.
It's been sent to all of us.
Yeah. So I think we're good. Just going to send it up to, to Tasby. All right. Great. Awesome. So we now move to section 11. Uh, Mr. G, upon personnel, excuse me, in 11A.
Nothing really of any significance that we need to discuss, other than we already induced, introduced, uh, this, this, uh, West and, uh, perfect, and so.
All right.
And, uh, hold on.
I need a point of clarification before we move on. And if I'm out of order, just let me know. The, what we have on the agenda and what Mr. Serta has, which we did get an email. Just for alignment, that needs to, next time be on the agenda for, in our board book. So that's just my point of clarification for that.
Yeah. So, um, what we have, uh, what Mr. Serta sent to us will be sent to Tasby.
I'm good with that.
And Tasby will then create the policy.
Um, I don't disagree with any of that. What I'm saying is what he has there should be here on the agenda. Cause what's on the, in the board book, cause on the agenda in the board book is something different. And I just think it needs to be aligned is all I'm saying.
It has, still that has a sample, one, two, three, four, five, where he's put it all together.
Yes. It is much more succinct. So the final one that should be there is the succinct one that we got as an email. But this makes it an official document. That is what I'm saying.
So, uh, yes, you are correct. The one that is in the board book is not the one, not the final one.
Yes, that's my only point.
We will need to substitute that. So we'll move back to that.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, and are we good to move forward to section 11 at that particular point? Uh, anyone else have any other points of clarification? Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So, um, yes, Mr. G, back to you.
So I said, there's nothing else on personnel. I mean, uh, Laura Adams is going to be retiring at the end of the year. I mean, we're be looking at filling that position. We have had filled almost every position teaching wise. And now with our, at Patterson, the, uh, Central Academics, uh, teacher has been filled and they start next week.
Monday.
Monday. So all teaching positions at this point in time. Our field, still working on our auxiliary positions. That is an ongoing, going again. So, all right.
Yes.
That's worth a clap.
It's a big deal.
I'm going to circle. I saw that out there. That was okay. Right. So that takes care of section, uh, 11B as, ooh, pardon me, as well.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, okay. And, um, there are no, am I correct? There's nothing that, uh, we need to go in closed session for, for some matters?
I don't, do not believe so.
All right. Well, then that leads us to everybody's favorite part of the meeting, section, uh, number 12. Since Sean's not here, Ms. Vigil Gomez would like to do the honors. That's the seat that always does it.
Suggests we get up out, out of here.
That motion passes. And we close at 8:32. Thank everybody for attending. We appreciate all of your attention.